Well, everything seems to be in order here, so I will call to order the work session here. And the first item we have is Z 25-11 LDC text amendment. And we will have Ashley McDonald presenting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner. I'll get started in just a moment. All right, I will, I will be very brief tonight. I have, I have a very short presentation for you on Z 25-11. This is related to middle housing. It's an LDC text amendment. And what we're asking of Commission tonight is to conduct a citizen review where we receive any feedback from the public that they may have to offer relative to the, the text amendment. And then we will ask Commission for direction to initiate the text amendment. We're looking to amend section 2.0 terms, section 3.0, the base zoning district and use regulations, section 4.0 overlay district regulations, section 5.0 additional use and site regulations, all related to middle housing. The, the goal of this text amendment is to make changes in conformance with House Bill 2721 that was adopted in, by the legislature in 2024. So just a little bit of background on this, we've been before, Commission related to this item last year. We made just a brief text amendment and a general plan amendment to identify our central business district related to this bill. But we had until January 1st of 2026 to develop the standards related to middle housing. And so this is the text amendment that we're now moving forward with. But what that bill requires is that we authorize by ordinance regulations allowing the development of duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and townhomes in a couple of different scenarios. One of those is on lots that are zoned single family within one mile of the municipality's central business district. So again, last year, we identified our heritage district as our central business district. So this would authorize these types of developments on lots within one mile of that central business district and including the central business district. And then also on 20% of any new development of more than 10 contiguous acres. And so that is not tied to the central business district. That would be anywhere in the town development of 10, more than 10 contiguous acres. So if the town does not adopt regulations allowing middle housing in these scenarios, it will be allowed on all lots zoned for single family without limitation. So it is, it is very important that the town follow this legislation and adopt these regulations. Provisions within House Bill 2721, it specifies things that municipalities may not do. That includes restricting middle housing types to less than two floors. We can't restrict floor area ratios to less than 50%. We can't set regulations, permit reviews, or review processes that are more restrictive than those on single-family dwellings within the same zoning district. We can't require owner occupancy on structures of, on the lot. And we can't require structures to comply with commercial building code or contain a fire sprinkler, and we can't require more than one parking space per unit. So these are all things that we'll have to address through our code amendment to ensure that we're complying with this. So next steps, we do not have a draft of this ordinance written to date, but with the direction of Commission tonight, we will begin working on an ordinance to comply with House Bill 2721. We will bring it back before a study session with Planning Commission once we do have a draft to receive any feedback. And then after that, it'll, it'll come as a public hearing. And then ultimately, Town Council will hold a study session there as well and then ask for action on the item before January 1st. So I believe that is it for my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Would ask the Commission to open it up in case there's any public here that wants to provide feedback before we get started drafting that amendment, and then we would ask for direction to initiate the text amendment.
Very well. Thank you, Ashley. Well, if anyone has any questions, we can do that. And then I will open it up. Does anyone want to ask any clarifying questions? Please, Vice Chair.
Let's say, the statement that we can't require sprinklers, I assume that means we can't require sprinklers if the associated houses don't have sprinklers. But we do have some places where houses have to be sprinkled. Do the, the ancillary structures then get sprinkled as well?
Something that I think we'll have to continue to evaluate with our, with our legal counsel. These bills often maybe have some vague language or could be interpreted one way versus another. And so I, this language that I have up here is direct from the bill. And so we'll need to evaluate, you know, what, what we think the intent was.
And then the second, I don't know if this is more of a, just a general concern, but the idea that we can't require parking for these. I, I, there's some, not everywhere, but there's some zoning or some classifications where I think our parking requirements are inadequate now. And I don't know what that means. Does that mean we have to revisit something else, somewhere else? Or do we, do we have to let it happen and see how it plays out? I'm not sure what the, it's, it's a, it's a concern of mine. I mean, I, I don't know that I would want to just stick a parking space on every one of these things. But it's a concern on how that's going to play out for me. I mean, overall, I'm in favor. It's, it's, this is the LDC amendment. It's in response to state law. Go, run like the wind. But I know that, that hangs out there to me as a concern.
Understood.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Anderson?
Ashley, thank you for the presentation. Just question. So I think in there said you can't require these structures to go into the building code, IBC code. So what if there's, I don't know off the top of my head, there's certain things in here in the IRC where what, IRC code where once you achieve those, it kind of forces you into the IBC code. So does that mean you'll have to work with the building department to do, I forget what the term is called, for the building codes? Kind of amendments to, to the building code to reflect that language?
Chairman Montic, Commissioner, we will absolutely be working with the building department to understand what the limitations or what types of things we need to write into our code so that we can comply with this and still comply with building code. So I, I don't have an answer for you, but that's certainly something that we'll be working through.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, we do have a couple of comment cards, so we'll have the public speak. And then we can also follow up if there's additional comment as it relates to this. So we have here Ms. Doralise Machado-Liddell. And Gilbert wishes to speak. Please come up and state your name and three minutes, please.
Good evening. My name is Doralise Machado-Liddell. I'm a Gilbert resident. And I also reside in own property in the Heritage District. I'm coming to you today for a citizen review of something that I don't know what I'm reviewing. I did go to the town last week to obtain information regarding this, but I wasn't able to obtain it. And so I can't speak on much of anything. This is a citizen review. It's a time for the citizens to know what is going on. We already know what the law is. We know that. We need to know how it's going to affect our property and our zoning and such. I understand with parking, that's a concern. It's always a concern. But I hear developers come in all the time and get reduction of parking, shared parking, and things like that. So I hope you consider that when, when considering what is going on. In addition to that, there are, you know, setbacks and all that. But to restrict it to the point where people cannot develop their property, these are mostly residential property owners. They're not developers with a lot of money to put sprinklers in, in the property. In my neighborhood, it's been, you know, it's 100 years old. I live with apartment complexes and they never, day one, had a sprinkler system. And, you know, they're still existing. So what I ask, hopefully, is some transparency. When this goes to a study session, the public cannot have any input. When it goes to a study session for council, the public cannot have any input. We cannot go to us a review without any information. It's not right. These reviews need to happen when you have information in front of you that people can review. So I ask in the future, and when they say they don't have a draft, they're not working on it, I guess. But why is it here? Once the draft is here, then open it up to a citizen review. I hope that that helps out, and thank you for your time. And my property will be affected by this, and hopefully for a positive manner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think that was the only comment on number one. Does anyone else have any other further follow-ups? Commissioner Simon?
Yeah, Ashley, can you clarify? Because I, my understanding is this is, you're, you're seeking approval from the Commission to basically draft the amendment and then open for citizens' review. Is that correct?
Correct.
We're, we're really not even at the citizen review portion yet. You're just looking to us to allow you to do that.
So we, we kind of hold both hearings at the same, or the items at the same time. So we're asking Commission to initiate it, but at the same time, opening it up in case there is public input on what they would like that draft to look like. So I think that's the intent of kind of grouping these two items is their input from the community on how this should move forward, you know, is the community interested in it? And then at the same time, Commission giving us direction that this is something you'd like us to move forward with.
So who should Doralise see in order to be involved in that process?
She can work with me on that.
Okay. Thank you.
And one clarifying question, this, the reason this is here is due to an obligation we have to state law. Is that correct?
Chairman, that is correct.
Okay. Very good. All right. Well, that's all I had. Anyone else have any other? Is everyone okay for us to authorize said citizen review and amendment? Okay. Sounds good. Authorization granted. De Padre. All right. Item number two, Z 25-10 LDC text amendment again. And this time we'll see Ms. Kristin Devine.
All right. Good evening, Commission. I am here kind of following in Ashley's footsteps with another text amendment for you. I am here for the same reason, to conduct a citizen review and to also get your approval to initiate a text amendment. My text amendment is not due to state legislation, though. It is pertaining to the Heritage Village Center zoning district. Over the last year, we have been looking into the concept of increasing height within the Heritage Village Center. So that's the text amendment that we are hoping to initiate this evening. Just a little bit of background on how we got here and why we're bringing this before you. In 2023, we held a council retreat where a presentation was provided by Urban 3. The presentation highlighted the different varying types of development and how that economically affects the town. The council direction at that time was to investigate what increased height could potentially look like within the Heritage District. In 2025, just a couple of months ago, we did provide follow-up information to council at another retreat. We provided research on other communities and what they do for height, as well as a visual representation of what increased height could look like. The council direction at that point was to continue research and then outreach to additional stakeholders. So we have been conducting forums with industry professionals, different departments within the town. And those conversations are still ongoing with different stakeholders. This is also needed due to the redevelopment plan. In the redevelopment plan, we highlight the desire for an 18-hour downtown, which essentially requires a mix of all uses to sustain that type of development. Increased height could allow for that flexibility. Okay, so I apologize. My slide with, my summary is missing, so I will verbally explain it to you. I'll have more information for you at the study session, which hopefully is coming before you in September. But just as a rough overview of what we're looking at, the current height permitted in the Heritage District right now in HVC zoning is 55 feet. We are looking to increase that to 75 feet. If they're located on Gilbert Road, we would still require a step back from 55 to 75 feet. If those HVC parcels are located off of Gilbert Road, we are still looking at 75 feet without a step back. And we are also looking into the opportunity for bonus incentive items, where if you provide specific items, then you could also get an increase of 15 extra feet, bringing that total height to 90 feet if you are located off of Gilbert Road. We are still working through a lot of those details, so I don't have specifics for you, but I will be providing that in our study session when we bring it forward. And again, I apologize for having that information missing from the presentation. And that is all I have for you.
Thank you, Kristin. Anyone have any comments or questions? Okay, as such, we do have some comment cards, so there's a number of individuals who would like to speak. First, I will call Alan Fitzgerald, who has checked that he wishes to speak. Please come up and state your name and three minutes, please, sir. One moment, sir. If you could hit the microphone red, there's a button on the base of it.
Oh, the on-off button?
Yeah.
I struggle with that one everywhere.
They hit it. Yeah. Thank you.
My name is Alan Fitzgerald. I'm a resident of Gilbert and have been for almost 40 years. I own property in the Heritage District. And I'm a stakeholder in decisions that are made concerning opportunities for development in the Heritage District. The issue in front of us right now is so vague, it's really hard to grab a hold of something and say, this is a great idea, this is not a great idea, this is what I'd like to see or not like to see. The absence of detail will limit my comments, so I'm going to push the rewind button. I was here two years ago. There was a zoning deviation requested to build a building over the 55 height. That was the Brundrette Building. And that was, in my mind, successfully defeated. And so we don't have an oversized building on Gilbert Road in the center of the Heritage District. There's a number of, of points in here that are quite vague. And it was mentioned a minute ago about certain step backs, depending on height, without any definition of what that is. I'll say very clearly, in the core of the Heritage District, basically would be Elliott Road and north up through the development where the new hotel area is going in. On Gilbert Road, the Heritage District development guidelines were very clear, done by quite a number of people, probably investing a few thousand hours of conversation, debate, disagreement finalized in an approved plan for the Heritage District. I'd hate to see that, in a sweep of a general change, defeated. Because that's what we agreed on, that's what we decided was appropriate. And if there is a building that needs the height increase, I think it should be dealt with on an individual case basis through zoning change for that building in that site for the construction type that it is. This across-the-board sweep to change height restrictions is in its sense opposition to the Heritage District guidelines should not be considered. This should not go forward. We should continue to treat development or height on an individual case-by-case basis to see if it fits within the guideline constructs, not necessarily the literal details in the guideline to be presented. So I hope to see more about what's driving this, why this is coming up, what is the building, what is the opportunity, where is it going to be, and how will it influence us stakeholders that own property and buildings in the Heritage District. Really do appreciate your time and look forward to more detail.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, next up to speak, we have Mary Ellen Fresquez. Same thing. Please come up, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Chairman Montic, Commissioners and Councilman Lyons. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mary Ellen Fresquez. I'm a 30-year resident of Gilbert and a business and property owner in the Heritage District. It isn't always the case that public meetings that address my concerns come to my attention. And I know that they're posted as required by law, but the vigilance required is really daunting. I served on the Redevelopment Commission. I'm very familiar with the Redevelopment Commission plan. Yet last night, I scrolled through it to see that these elements still jump out at me. The themes of the Heritage District are pedestrian scale, intimate atmosphere, historic character, and a small-town feel. I am not against multi-story building in the Heritage District. I support smart growth. And that's why I'm asked, what I am asking of you today. I hope you forgive, forgive the gimmickry approach that I'm going to be using, but I know that three minutes vanishes quickly. And I want to do a quick rundown of building heights in the central business core, the 200 and the 300 blocks. I won't name every business unless you ask me to. But I'm going to start on the northwest side, just south of the canal at Barrio Queen. It's a single story. Lolos is two stories, The Bar, two stories, The Ice Cream Place, two stories, Good Chicken, two stories, and Burger, one story. You cross Vaughn to Oregano's, one story, a breakfast place, one story, Postino's, one story. You cross Page Street to Liberty Market, one story, barbecue place. And then you go to a possible 75-foot building. Then you go to Norwoods, one building, one story, American Legion, one story, the Convenia Mart and its new building, one story and two stories. You cross the street to the Chamber of Commerce.
That, the town's general plan goes, it goes back to the redevelopment plan. Redevelopment plan was established and approved in 2018. According to the revised statutes, Title 36, 36-1479, if you change, substantially change, I'm going to read H, "Any proposed modification which will substantially change the redevelopment plan as previously approved by the local governing board shall be considered a new plan and shall be subject to the requirements of this section before it can be approved." And in this regulation, in the law, it states that you have to notify each property owner in the Heritage District before and tell them, to, tell them by mail that this is being initiated. The redevelopment plan is in 2018. The next one is 2028. I don't know when the economic department will start planning for this, but it's normally a year and a year and a half process. This is the time, this is the place where the public can have input, where they are, they are aware of what's actually going on. This is basically a circumvention of the laws and how to enforce it. And I know they're going to say, well, the redevelopment plan is just a guideline. Well, you know, they just used the guideline in order to establish this new proposed text amendment. They established the, it's established to have design guidelines. It's established to have bonds. It's established to have intimate domain. There are a lot of things that go into the redevelopment. So I ask this. This should be, this should not be initiated. This should be proposed in the redevelopment planning and process. We've waited over 30 years, 40 years, and we still have dirtlots. Two years will not make a difference. We need to have public input. This is a very, very important document, and that's the redevelopment plan. And it affects everyone in Gilbert, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay. That was all the comment cards that I have. Is there anyone else that wished to speak on this item? Okay. Well, then we'll bring it up and see if any of the Commissioners has any questions or Okay, well, then we'll bring it up and see if any of the Commissioners has any questions or comments as it relates to this text amendment. Commissioner Simon.
I'll just comment. You know, we're currently at 55 feet. I think that the Brundet Building wanted an additional 10 feet for some screening or something along those lines, I don't remember exactly. I feel like 75 feet in the district is excessive. I think that we should look at it from a case-by-case basis. So I'm not sure that I'm in alignment with this, and I think that I'd probably agree with the residents with regards to going the process of the RDC.
Thank you, Commissioner Simon. Anyone else have any comments?
I have a question for.
Vice Chair, go ahead.
For Kristen. One of the, I remember it was one of the goals is that it's an 18-hour day or where an 18-hour, is that like by design, we're going to be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.? You know, New York's the city that never sleeps. We're the city that sleeps from 2:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m.? Or what does that mean?
So I don't know that I'm the best person to explain it, but we don't have specific times where we're looking at, like you said, like a 10:00 a.m. to a 2:00 a.m. type of thing. An 18-hour downtown is really meant to be somewhere where you live, work, and play, somewhere where everything is accessible, all-in-one area that operates at different hours of the day, not just your standard nine to five. So the increased height that we are looking into can benefit that by allowing for multifamily mixed with office, mixed with commercial, where you have one building that has all of these uses together. And I have all sorts of additional information that I would love to provide you in the study session, but fortunately, it just wasn't ready to come before you this evening.
Okay, it's more just kind of what's implied in that term. So I guess it really doesn't affect, I don't think, the actual matter in front of us, though.
And can you clarify that what staff is asking of us, is this similar in nature to the Item 1, where this, you're asking us to initiate a citizen review to where not only the citizens whom are present today against it, that other citizens who may in fact be for it would coalesce and bring all of their input together? Like, I just want to make sure the question of are we sidestepping a current redevelopment plan versus are we opening up the conversation where what they're seeking of that would take place? I mean, I am not in favor of just blanketing it to say, okay, now everybody can do the 90 feet or whatever that might be. But I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that this, today, what we are deciding is, what does that mean?
Yeah, sure. So Chairman Munt, it's pretty much exactly the next steps that Ashley explained in her presentation. All we're looking for tonight is for your approval to pursue this text amendment, to be able to bring it back before you for a study session and potential vote, if that's the way that we go. We'll also go to Redevelopment Commission for their feedback, for their recommendation. We'll go to council for their feedback, their final vote. So this is really just the first step. We need to be able to bring it through for a proper discussion with the different boards and councils. But like Ashley was explaining, this is also a citizen review with the initiation. So this is the opportunity for the citizens to provide their input. But this is the information that we have at this time.
Now, I turned off my mic. And if it were to go forward through those channels that you just described into the Redevelopment Commission, would it come back here then, too?
Yes, absolutely. So off the top of my head, it will come to you for study session first. It will then go to Redevelopment Commission for study session. It will go to Redevelopment Commission for recommendation, to you for recommendation, and then somewhere in their council study session, and then council gets the final approval. So it will go to all three of you for both study session and hearing.
Okay. So if an individual commissioner is even against this, a vote today is not in fact saying, I am for this. I am for, if staff wishes to seek that process, that I would say, I am for that process taking place?
Correct, yes. This is a vote simply on the process. It has nothing to do with the numbers that I've provided you. That's all information that we can discuss in a study session or during the hearing. This is just allowing staff to present you more information and to get resident feedback, information that we have.
Okay. Okay, anyone else have any other comments or questions?
In terms of initiating, beginning the process, I would be all in favor of that, except for related to what Jan said. You've already got numbers in this. I mean, heights and if it was just, we're looking at beginning a process. I mean, it sounds to me like the process has begun if you already know that we're looking at 75 feet. If it's step 55, a step, I mean, it sounds like at least something's already begun.
Sure. So Chairman Munt, Vice Chair Fay, research has been done, just due to direction from the council at the retreat, to look into whether increased height is something that they'd even be favorable towards in the Heritage District, if it would work for our Heritage District. We've looked into other communities as a comparative analysis. We've looked into industry experts to get their feedback on different heights, things like that. So we have information to provide, too. But we don't have a draft of a text amendment yet, and we don't have your official feedback on whether or not this is even the right path to go. That's usually what study sessions are reserved for. But we can't bring this to, for a study session until we formally initiate it if that's the route.
We have to follow. The council gave you some marching orders, and we have to follow those, too, in my opinion. So including specifically, if it's about new building heights, I'm all on board. I do agree with Commissioner Simon, that those numbers sound a little on the high side for the area. But if it's a little bit of, oh, we just did some research, okay. Good enough.
The numbers are a baseline that we're working with, but they are conceptual. They can be tweaked due to direction given by any of the councils.
The numbers don't come from council, right?
Correct.
The idea of looking at height comes from council.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So then in this case, you then would once again need a yea or nay as to whether or not we encourage you to initiate? Oh.
Yes.
Oh, Chairman, Commissioner DeGravina, you're on the end, I apologize.
I had my light on so long, I forgot what my question was. I think your answer to Commissioner Fay's question answered a part of my concern, is how did this come up? I think you said it came up because the council was out for the study session, and height issues were discussed. And you mentioned, excuse me, you answered another part of my question, is that you said because of those height increases, you could add more availability, I guess more living units, more parking, more everything. But I agree with the resident. I don't think we need to go that high, and I think it should be on an individual, one-off basis. That's my input on this.
Okay, well, then, do we have a consensus of what we would like to recommend?
I don't know. I think that I would have to be against approval of moving this forward. I just, I feel like 55 feet, four stories, is plenty in the district, at least for now. And we've got vacant properties there. If we take it on a case-by-case basis, if somebody wants to come before us and try to get another 10 feet, I think that's fine. If RDC is coming up in the next couple of years, I don't know. I just really struggle with this, and I struggle with this becoming where we've got towering buildings in a very narrow space. So I just struggle with it. I don't feel like it's right for this area, so.
At the risk of overstepping, I apologize. I have a ton of information that I would be able to provide you for how we got to this concept. I just, this information isn't included because it's an initiation. It's not a study session. I don't have all the information for you.
Right. So what we're talking about is just, in order for you to expend time upon doing something such as this development, I imagine that you would have to have some direction. Is that sort of what we're saying? Okay, let me game plan this out, then. What happens to council's request to look into this in the event that we do not grant that approval?
I'm going to defer to Ashley or Elena, I don't know.
Just kidding. Mr. Chair, according to the Land Development Code, it looks like the town council may direct the Planning Commission to initiate and analyze and make a recommendation for text code, a code, a text amendment to the code. Additionally, you as a body may also initiate consideration of any text amendment. So depending on what you decide here, I imagine will, town council will be updated, and there is a provision in the LDC where they can direct Planning Commission to go ahead and initiate that.
Okay.
Lena, may I ask a question? Is it possible to conduct a second citizen review? Or we only do the one this evening?
LDC does allow for us to set out our own process for citizen review, like has been discussed here tonight. Part of that is the overall concept, requests to be included in, you know, included in the, as a stakeholder. And then, again, with the multiple hearings, especially with regard to this specific text amendment, they will have another opportunity to weigh in.
Go ahead, you have something, Vice Chair.
Not for the entire group, but speaking for my, I mean, to me, I think the fact that council wants this is going to, if we were voting, it would essentially force my hand. If council wants it, the answer for me is yes. I hope you've heard, clearly heard the numbers you've thrown out there are maybe not ones that will be favorably received if they.
Loud and clear.
And in the event that we don't have a full consensus, what is the appropriate manner with which to proceed? Do I do a vote, or do I just say, I guess, I don't know? Lena's wishing that I was on vacation again, since I'm putting the hard questions out.
Can I speak some more?
Commissioner Simon, nothing would make me happy.
With all due respect, may I, please? My concern with recommending this move forward would be that it hits the process and somehow gets silenced. And I'm, I just, I feel like we have a very good Heritage District, and I think that we have a very good plan for the Heritage District. I would just be very concerned that once this ball starts rolling, it would be very difficult to put it back in the box. And so that's my concern, and I would much rather take it on a case-by-case basis. But I don't know if we need to take a vote. I don't know if you can just wave your magic wand and make it happen. But I just, I want to make myself clear, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Simon.
Mr. Chair, just to get back to your question, the LDC conceitedly could use a little more information on that account, but it looks like the commission would just direct the planning manager to prepare an amendment. So it's an affirmative action on your part to, or on this panel's part, to direct them to do that. Absent that, they don't have the authority under this provision. But again, the town council can come back and direct Planning Commission to go ahead and initiate text amendment as well. So I'm not sure I'm answering your question as directly as I'd like, but I don't think that you need to take any action for staff not to do it. It takes affirmative action in order to make that happen.
Okay. And when, I just want to make one other clarifying point. When you say that council can have us, like they can direct us to do it, is that what we're dealing with here, or is this different? Like, I just, I want to make sure if council has directed us to do something, and that's something they can do, that, to me, is different than what do I think of this?
So council has held two sessions on the Heritage District, and through those sessions, we received feedback that this is something that they would like us to look into.
All right, well, how many, Commissioner Davis, please.
I was just going to say that I guess where I'm at is I'm okay with initiating this. Staff has heard the concerns. I think moving, I'm willing to hear what, you know, proposal will be in the future, and there'll be public hearings to discuss further, so that's where I stand on it.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right.
Just came to help.
Bring it in the heavies?
Just came to help if I could. You are correct. The council at one of the Heritage District workshops did talk to staff and direct staff to start looking into additional height in the Heritage District. And so as part of that process, an initiation with the Planning Commission, council could have directed the Planning Commission to initiate it. But typically, our process is, and you've seen it several times, staff comes in front of the Planning Commission to initiate it. It starts the ball rolling, then we can have all the public hearings in front of the different bodies and take it eventually back to council for a decision.
Okay, okay. Well, I think in regards to, similar to echoing the statements of Commissioner Davis on the sense of looking into it, I don't particularly have a problem with saying, sure, you can look into it, but the input, both from the citizens today as well as ours, reflecting the need for it. But I want to make sure that as a body, we're at least okay with that as it relates to, you know, Commissioner Simon's position as well. Okay. Well, all right, then I will just fall on the sword and say, I will grant the authorization to look into it. But please note for the record that there are some concerns from us as it relates to this height, and that we very much expect to be able to take all the information, both from the citizens and that the other design review, to be sure that we can make a good decision on this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number three, DR 25-54, NWC Valvista in Queen Creek. And we get graced with the presence of Mr. Sal DeSanto.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. Good to see you all tonight. The project we'll be taking a look at tonight is DR 25-54, the northwest corner of Valvista in Queen Creek. Taking a look here at the subject site, it is currently parceled off quite a bit, but it's basically going to be this big portion at the northwest corner of Valvista in Queen Creek. The portion outlined in blue is roughly 8.07 acres, and the total master site plan is roughly 12.95 acres. The entire site is zoned shopping center and is actually bordered by single-family residential to the north and to the west. Just across Valvista, we also have some vacant land, which is going to be, or I'm sorry, carries the SF 35 zoning district. And just to the south, beyond Queen Creek, is some additional shopping center. Before we dive into the current site plan, I think it would be beneficial just to show the previous approval back from 2023, which is for the master site plan amendment, which also included the Walgreens at the hard corner there. With this amendment, the applicant at the time proposed six pads on the entirety of the site, two of which are existing, Walgreens and the storage facility, and then four additional pads for future development. Of the six, two of the pads are dedicated to drive-through uses, and that's including the Walgreens Pharmacy Drive-Thru. and that's including the Walgreens pharmacy drive-through. Now, taking a look at the most updated site plan, we can see that there's been quite a bit of changes from the previous iteration to this one. The most noticeable change is gonna be the amount of pads on the site. As mentioned, the previous iteration had a total of six pads and two drive-throughs. This current iteration is eight pads with, I believe, five drive-throughs. So some of the most noticeable changes you can see here are, other than the increase in buildings, is the reorientation of Pad A, which has been redesigned to accommodate a daycare center. We also see the adjustments along the northeast corner, where we have the transition of three commercial pads in a row there. And then we can also see the adjustment along Queen Creek Road with the addition of the Quick Loop Shop, which is proposed to be a Valvoline. The proposed site orientation raises a few concerns with staff due to the proximity of auto-centric uses in the shopping center zoning district. Specifically, as I mentioned, those three pads up along Val Vista and the transition between the Valvoline and the Walgreens. With this, because there is a high quantity of auto-oriented uses, this limits the amount of architecture facing the arterial streets. Streets typically, in our commercial developments, we'd like to see this, you know, high presence of architecture along our street frontages. And with the inclusion of these additional pads, we have a lot of them in an east-west orientation, providing the main facade's interior to the site. With the increased number of pads, we also have some concerns in regards to safety, particularly vehicular circulation and pedestrian circulation. Because the site has been reoriented with the removal of the centralized parking and more of a independent design for each pads, we want to ensure that there is sufficient pedestrian circulation, or I'm sorry, pedestrian safety and vehicular circulation. We particularly see this, once again, in that alignment along Val Vista, where those three proposed drive-throughs all carry the same orientation, with the drive-throughs wrapping east to west and with the potential stacking into the interior drive aisles onsite. And the last bit we wanted to add just on the site plan, as mentioned, it is in the shopping center zoning district. And typically, within the zoning district, we like to see medium-to-large-scale commercial and office uses that create the ability to spend, you know, more time on the site and create an engaging experience. And we feel that the implementation and addition of these additional pad sites and their design serves more as independent uses instead of a unified design. Another thing I just wanted to add to looking at the site plan is just in regards to setbacks. Because we are adjacent to residential on the north and to the west, we want to ensure that the 75-foot building setback is met, as well as the 30-foot landscape to the north and the 35-foot landscape setback to the west. Currently, the landscape setback to the west isn't completely met. On that northwest strip, we are meeting that 35, but it does tend to thin down as we move south, getting below that count. So we'll continue to work with the applicant to ensure the minimum standards are met onsite. And now leading into this updated site plan, so this is actually a site plan that was provided to us by the applicant towards the tail end of last week. It has not been formally submitted, but you can tell in the design that they've been trying to respond to staff's comments as best as they can. They've aligned much of the site similar to the original orientation that was approved with the Walgreens, except with the inclusion of the two pads, which are the Quick Loop Shop and one of the drive-through users along Val Vista. We haven't had time to formally review this one, but just taking a quick look at it, we, you know, do appreciate the applicant's willingness to add that centralized parking, to help create a free-flowing design, to help pedestrians navigate to other pads, and the, also the reorientation of the drive-through in the northeast corner. You can see that that drive-through and the one, two pads down now have deferring orientation, which will help with the vehicular circulation. Looking at the landscape plan, the plants, you know, trees and shrubs are very consistent with what's been proposed with the Walgreens and the storage facility. Some of the plants are Palo Verde, Red Push Pistachio, and Evergreen Elm. But the biggest thing to note is along the Queen Creek street frontage, there are various SRP easements, which restrict the placement of trees. So we'll continue to work with the applicant to ensure they're strategically placed onsite to meet the quantities along the street frontages. And again, mentioning that that landscape setback along the west property line will need to maintain 35 feet for the entirety. Here, I just wanted to provide some elevations as context for the Walgreens that was previously approved as the master site plan requires the pads within it to share some kind of architectural form. Here, looking at the proposed Valvoline, we can see that it carries pretty much the same shape, but the colors are a bit varied and the architecture is a bit different. While the materials are consistent, the use of CMU, EPHIS, metal accents, we just would like to see the applicant try and tie in closer to the Walgreens with the, you know, inclusion of those cooler colors opposed to the warm colors and maybe tying in another additional material. And with that, we are just bringing this to you all for any questions, comments, but particularly in regards to the overall site design, elevations, and the compliance and intent of the shopping center zoning district. And I'm happy to answer any questions or take in any comments. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Sal. Bring it up here and see. I do have a comment card. Does anybody have anything they wanted to ask or comment on with Sal prior to entertaining the public input? Not usually, but. Okay, we have an individual, it does not say he wishes to speak, but if you do, sir, and I read this, please come on up. But it's from Tim Loker. He is in favor of the item, and his comments are, "Let's get this project built. Great developer, great site." If you would like to, sir, please, yeah. Are you, are you Tim Loker?
I am.
Yeah, please come on up to the podium. That was escaping me. State your name and three minutes, sir. If you could hit the button in the center, there you go.
Got it. A little slow here, sorry. Tim Loker with Hawkeye Development. Interested in the development and also looking at one of the pads for a client of mine. And we are excited, wanna get going, and not subject here. Personally, they need to get going and wanna do it here in Gilbert. Can't wait forever. Understand everything going on, but love to get in there and we'll, we'll, uh, work with planning and staff and making sure our pads, but would love to see this going and feel like the, the last iteration that, obviously biased, but the last iteration, the seller and their architect made, or the master development feels to us like it, it certainly addressed a lot of the issues, and we're hopeful it did, so that we can give back our application and try to catch up and help for business.
We can't actually comment on anything you're saying, in case that was, I just wanted to clarify.
Understood, yeah. Don't need to, didn't need to speak, but in support of the project and no questions, I'll back down.
All right, thank you very much, Mr.-
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, we'll bring it up here then for discussion from the group. Anyone want to kick off? Possibly criticism of Sal if you'd like. I don't know what you'd say, but. Commissioner Anderson?
Sal, thank you for the presentation. You made a comment during it that you were wanting the, I think the colors and materials to tie more into the Walgreens. I didn't see an image in here, so what type of colors do they have on that Walgreens?
Chairman, Commissioner Anderson. So the colors that are proposed on the Walgreens are gonna be that Baltic gray and cotton. They represent a bit of more cooler tones to the site, which also ties into that existing storage facility. They also have some nichihua, you know, fiber cement and various textures to provide some architectural change along those, those facades. So we were just looking from, from staff to see if there was a way to maybe pull in one of these colors or additional materials to accent the, the built Walgreens.
Okay. Well, they have the reds back and forth on these, and I'm assuming the Valvoline is probably their prototype. They kinda just build all over the place.
Chairman, Commissioner Anderson, I'm thinking so. I think that's just one of their goal.
Yeah. Okay. I personally, I'm okay with the colors around here. I, I'm not a big fan as to when you have these big commercial centers and every single building has the same colors, same materials, everything. It just doesn't create any interest in the project, in the area that I feel. So I'm okay with the colors this way, but if you guys wanna kinda go that direction that you're going, that's, that's your prerogative. That's fine, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Any other input that we'd like to share with the staff as it relates? Chairman Davis?
Thank you, Chair. I'll just say that I echo some of staff's concerns as far as the pedestrian connectivity and the vehicular safety. These drive-throughs, some of them will generate possibly a lot of traffic, a lot of cars backing up. So I think that needs to be looked at pretty carefully. That site plan that you presented that you just saw, it looked like they were going back to the major A plan that they had in the initial site plan. Just looks like there's a bit less parking. So that's something for staff to look at and evaluate. I do appreciate that they did that. But I do think that they need to take those concerns to heart and try and make some changes to make this a good center. That's a lot of drive-throughs, a lot of auto-oriented uses right there, and it's not really creating a synergy. I agree with what you said about the SC zoning district and it not really meeting that intent. So I support staff on that. As far as the building elevations go, I agree that I don't think all of the buildings need to match each other. I think some ties together. If there's, you know, some materials that are the same or some forms that are the same, they can nod to each other without being too matchy, so that's where I stand on that. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Vice Chairman Fay?
Sal, I'm not terribly bothered by the change in use or the, the additional pads. As long as we make sure the drive aisles don't back up out onto the right of way, I'm not actually that bothered by it. I would not be very sympathetic to the deviation in the setbacks, particularly against residential communities. If you need that to get this done, then you're trying to get too much onto this site. Other than that one quote, it seems like that's kind of the smaller issue, but to me, that's the one that I'm less sympathetic to. The, my, as far as the rest of it, I'm not particularly concerned by it. It might not be what the city originally invested, but I mean, this is, this is where the, you know, the free-market capitalist kinda comes in. It's his, he's putting the money up, so I'm not as bothered by that when it comes forward again.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner DeGervino?
I was gonna say, when I first looked at this project this weekend, I was a little bit concerned. Going from six pads to, and, and two drive-throughs to eight pads and five drive-throughs, that's quite an increase. But you said you guys have looked at that, if you've looked at the safety of the pedestrians, I feel comfortable if you did enough analysis to feel that it's appropriate, because that makes it a much more crowded area. That's quite an increase. It's more than double on the drive-throughs. Drive-throughs are busy, and they take up a lot of space. So that would be, as long as you guys have looked at it and feel comfortable, then I guess I'm fine with it, too. But it kinda stood out when I was reviewing this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, any other final comments? All right, Sal, do you have enough information?
Got everything I need. Thank you.
Attaboy. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, moving on to item number four, discussion of the regular meeting agenda. We're looking at the consent. We have eight, nine, 10, 11. Does anyone have any issues with those consent items? Okay, and then on to the non-consent as it relates to, I was told prior to the meeting that item number 14 has been continued. Is that correct? Is that Ashley?
Chairman, that is correct. It didn't receive action at council last night, so we'll need to continue that until November 5th.
And we should put the vote November 5th in the statement, then? Okay. And then we have items 12, 13, and 15 will be the three on non-consent. And I know that I have comment cards on number 13.
Well, that was the one I was gonna recommend for consent, but I guess not.
So I guess, well, that's what you get, vice chair. Okay, well, I guess that it looks like we'll just leave the agenda as is.
So that's the only one you've got comment cards on?
Thus far, but I can tell that there's been a bit of a influx of individuals that will take time, so. Okay, well, then, very good. Well, with that, then, I will adjourn the work session, and we will take a five-minute break and be back here to kick off the meeting at 6:12. Thank you. Okay. Well, it looks like I was a few minutes off on my estimate of five. We went nine. So I will take this time now and call the regular meeting to order. We will open with the pledge of allegiance. If you would please stand and follow me. All right, Ashley, if I could get a roll call, please?
Alternate Commissioner Wong. Alternate Commissioner Lyon. Commissioner DeGravina.
Here.
Commissioner Gage. Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Simon.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Fay.
Here.
And Chairman Munt.
Here.
Chairman, we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Okay, we can move into item number five, which is the approval of the agenda. I'll just entertain a motion. I believe from our discussion in the study session, we've decided the agenda would stay the same. So if anyone has a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda as such.
We have a motion from Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
What, before we go any further, can we, does the motion to approve it as written with the continuation on it, or?
No, we'll just vote to continue.
We'll do that.
That was, yeah.
Then I'll second the motion.
Okay. Second from Vice Chair. Everyone, please cast your vote. Motion carries. Communications. Item number six is the communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. Commission may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda. Therefore, pursuant to state law, action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration. I have a number of comment cards, two of which were listed as general comment. So I will read your name. And if you wish to speak, please come up and you'll have three minutes. So Rob Gudarian. Yeah, Rob, come on up to the podium and turn on the microphone. There's a button at the base with a kind of face with some lines of volume coming out of it. Hit that and then please state your name and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Is that good? Yep. Okay. Commissioner and members of the commission, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Rob Gudarian. I'm a Gilbert resident and I live in Stonebridge Lakes Estates. And I'm here to speak to you about an ongoing issue we've had with 33 North Development by Woodside Homes, specifically around a common boundary and recent administrative activity. When I last was here at this podium in April to speak to you, there was a dispute over whether our shared property line, where the actual shared property line was. That dispute has now been resolved and our existing walls are entirely within our property as we stated. This has been confirmed by multiple surveys and a replat that has been submitted by Woodside Homes last month. At that meeting, Mr. Sean Terrell from Woodside Homes stood at this very pulpit and promised to, quote, "Work this out," and that Woodside Homes wanted to be a good neighbor. Six of you took him at his word and voted to move that project forward. But here's what happened next. Four business days later, Woodside was on-site with the mixers running and mortar ready, and they were preparing to stucco the backside of our private walls that they didn't even own. After that, the town issued them a permit to build a perimeter wall, and they built that, knowingly, and they knowingly crossed the boundary line and attached it to my neighbor's private wall without permission. After that, their contractors graded lots one through six, pushing 10 to 12 inches of dirt over the property line and against our walls, which are not engineered as retaining walls. These are most definitely not the actions of a good neighbor developer. We have given Woodside Homes ample time to work with us on an agreeable solution. There is no need for hurried, rushed, and back-room deals to be made. On May 15th, they submitted an incomplete proposal for a replacement wall, leaving Stonebridge Lakes residents to cover the costs for painting, landscaping, irrigation, wall reconnection, among other costs. This violates the June 2022 stipulations in the plan approval that this commission issued for that site, which clearly states that the developer must cover all costs associated with wall reconstruction. We countered this offer on May 30th. Since then, total silence from Woodside Homes for almost three months. Meanwhile, we've learned that Woodside and town planning staff have been exploring alternate solutions without notifying affected residents and are potentially considering building a double wall, which also violates the approval given in 2022. One such proposal includes building a view fence just 16 inches away from our existing walls. Let me be very clear. A 16-inch alleyway between walls is a maintenance, safety, drainage, pest, and liability nightmare, and it violates the town's own code and the original approval conditions. To make matters worse, there are still serious deficiencies with the survey and replats submitted by Woodside Homes. My request tonight is simple. Do not allow these major changes that are part of this replat to be approved administratively in secret without affected residents' input. Please bring them back before this planning commission, in public, where they belong. You are clear in the conditions of your 2022 plan approval. Deviating from it undermines the committee's authority and casts doubt on the transparency, integrity of the planning and approval process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next general comment I have, Brandon Martinez. And same thing, sir. Please just state your name and then you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Brandon Martinez. I'm actually from the same housing area, Stonebridge, with the same concerns with 33 West. We were here before. We spoke before about this specific housing project and some of our concerns. My personal experience with it has been I have had concerns with the safety of my son, who is blind and autistic, with concerns over things being driven into our neighborhood, potentially with scorpions, snakes, things like that. And there are things we actually encountered with this. We originally talked about this with the committee when another builder was looking at building there, and there was a plan to mitigate that. Some things that came actually from this council to say, hey, this, these are some ways that we can address that. When this housing area started coming in, or the new developer, I mentioned that. Their comment was, yeah, we'll take care of that. We'll reach out to the committee, see what their recommendations were, and we'll make sure that's addressed. Then, less than a week later, they were out tearing down the house, leveling the field. Nothing in place to mitigate that, and we've seen scorpions, snakes, those type of things driven into the neighborhood. Now, we have the same kind of concerns coming in. If we're going to put back-to-back walls, the same thing that was just mentioned, that's going to create a corridor in there that we can't maintain, doesn't allow access, becomes a fire hazard. The scorpions and things that are already there become more. Rodents and things that are already there become more because there's no way for us to address that. Looking at the website, the ideal candidate for this committee was, the ideal candidate will, has to have the need for balance between individual property rights and the long-term needs of the community. The candidate should experience actively listening to viewpoints and know how to raise thoughtful questions in a group setting. What I'm asking is, is this balance? I am at a place where I can't do anything about it. You can. So all I'm asking is, let's have that balance. Let's have an open forum. Let's discuss what's going on. Let's discuss the concerns. And let's make sure that the safety, financial security, and everything of both parties is addressed. My thing is, I mean, we could do one of two things. We can do the easy thing, and we could go into an administrative session and basically rubber stamp things for the builder, or we could have an open forum where we can have a discussion and hear both sides. My son in the back, I don't want him being bit by a snake, encountering rats. If he gets stung by something, bit by something, he can't see it. He's autistic, doesn't know to move away from it, and I have safety concerns around that. I want to make sure those things are addressed in what we do when we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the last comment card we have is a, Ms. Doraleese Machado-Liddell wishes to speak. Please come up. State your name again and three minutes.
Hello, my name's Doraleese Machado-Liddell, and I just would like to comment. I'm a Gilbert resident. I'd like to comment on a few things. I'd like to comment on the fact that I've brought this up on multiple occasions, that the planning commission agenda items need to be placed on the event calendars where the redevelopment commission agenda items are, and also the town council. This would give the public the opportunity to know what's going on and have the opportunity to make comments. Right now, you really have to find it, and it's hard to find for somebody who doesn't know what they're looking for. I'd also like to ask the town attorney, I know you can't comment, but is the, is it a substantial change going from 55 feet to 90 feet? Is that substantial? I would also like to say regarding the citizen review, this is the public hearing comment, not comment, notification. On this public hearing notification, it says, "All application of project files may be reviewed or viewed by the public Monday through Friday at the East Civic Center Drive." You can't review anything because there's nothing to review. So I think that, like I said before, if you're going to have a review, know, give the public the information on what they're reviewing. I would also like to say, one of the things that is missing, and I appreciate your time and I appreciate listening to the public, but I really believe that your duties are provided by the council, but I don't, and I'm very disturbed that the council can tell you what to do. The council needs to, it needs to go to the council and then they need to decide, but to basically have the council tell you what to do is kind of disturbing. And I hope you stand up for the people that you're here, and I know you will, but I just would like to comment on that. So please take that back to the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As it relates to the first two comments, not to discount Ms. Doraleese, but I just wanted to, I guess, for the first time in my tenure, direct staff, if I could just get an update of both something about that development and the wall situation. Because I just, I would take that as that that is a criticism, and I would like to better understand both what that situation is and then also what what function we could have, because it sounds almost like it's more of a code enforcement versus something that I would, you know, that we would have any purview, but I want to get a better understanding. And I don't know if that's just something that you could brief me on or let me know, but or if that's legal, Elena, I don't know.
That's fine, Mr. Chair. You're within you're within your purview to request further information. So we'll take that note. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move to item number seven, report from council liaison on current events, and Councilmember Lyons.
I don't have anything at this time. No, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing consent. All items listed below are considered the public hearing consent calendar. The commission may by a single motion approve any number of items where, after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item to be removed from the open consent calendar. Such a request is made, the commission shall withdraw the item from public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of public discussion. And other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved. These are, our consent calendar consists of items eight, nine, 10, and 11. Currently, I do not have any comment cards, given the high attendance we have. I want to query the crowd to see, is there any individuals who had come out this evening to speak on any of the items eight, nine, 10, or 11 that I did not get a comment card for? Okay. Then with that being said, I will
Chairman, I believe we might have one gentleman here.
Always. Oh, here, I'll read, I'll read this. I, yeah, eight, nine, and 10. Eight, number eight is S25-01 Happy and Higley. Number nine is ST24-02 Cottage Lane. 10 is DR24-112 Costco Fuel Expansion. And 11 is And 11 is DR-24-141 Ranch House Court Industrial Building. And I guess to answer the question of the gentleman, is it, in the back, there should be agendas, and there's, there's not? Oh. There might have been, usually there would be, but yeah, so it, the agendas are in the back. And if anyone else does not have an agenda, please let someone on the staff on this side know, and we can try to get you...
Chairman, if I may, there is a QR code that you can scan in the back that will take you to the agenda. And we also do have a staff member going to print some, so we should have some more agendas in the back shortly.
Perfect. I'm sure most people are like me with QR codes. That's, that's a little too hipster. I get confused, so, all right. Well, then... Yes, ma'am? That's a great question. What she asked about was, she said that there was no packets for number 15, which I believe is the same issue, Ashley.
Chairman, that's correct. We did run out of copies, and again, are making more copies, so we should have some of those brought in in just a moment. Actually, I think, I think they might be here.
And in the interim, would that QR code also link people to that item as well, or is that just the agenda?
I'm not sure.
Okay. I shouldn't have asked. Okay, I think Sal has some more, so if anyone else needed packets, they will have some there. With that, then, I think we can entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Fair for me?
Yes, please.
Go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent calendar consisting of eight, S-25-01 Happy and Higley, number nine, ST-24-02 Cotton Lane, number 10, DR-24-112 Costco Fuel Expansion, and number 11, DR-24-141 Ranch House Court Industrial Building.
Thank you, Commissioner Simon. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from the vice chair. Please cast your vote. Motion carries 7-0. Moving on now to the public hearing non-consent. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. These comment cards are these yellow cards that will be in the back. So for anyone who is here to speak, please be sure, if I do not have your card, to fill one out, just so that I do not miss anything. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by the commission. Starting off here, we will have item 12, consisting of two, S-24-01 The Ranch, and DR-24-06 The Ranch, and Ms. Nicole Russell.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the commission, Nicole Russell, Senior Planner Development Services. The two applications before the commission this evening is the Ranch Master Site Plan, landscaping, grading and drainage, elevations, floor plans, lighting, and colors and materials for an approximate 312-acre site located south of Elliott Road. It is also west of Power Road and north of Warner. There are five zoning districts associated with this development, which include the multifamily medium, mixed-use small, mixed-use large, light industrial, and general commercial. Here is the approved phasing plan that was approved with ordinance 2872 and 2873 in June of 2023. The first phase of the development will consist of the green open space, and the Phase 1A consists of the multifamily medium, mixed-use small, mixed-use large, since it's not colored on this map, that's why I'm going through this for you, general commercial. And the 1B phase is the restricted industrial, which I'll go into later in my presentation. 1C is the commercial phase at the corner of Warner and Power. And the second and third phases include the industrial portion of the project. Here is the master site plan that is proposed, that is in substantial conformance with the approved development plan associated with both of the zoning ordinance, Z-2305, and Z-2304, as well as GP-2312 and GP-2205. Here is the preliminary plat. The applicant is requesting the approval of the preliminary plat for a 37-lot subdivision. Most of the lots are, follow the building lines, except for the multifamily medium is one lot. Part of the mixed-use small, I guess I should point this out for you. So the mixed-use, or the multifamily medium is this portion. This would be part of the mixed-use small, and this is part of the mixed-use large. Otherwise, the rest of the parcels, the parcels being created would follow approximate building lines and parking. As stated, Phase 1 will be an approximate 18.5-acre strip that is along a portion of Ren Drive. This is a buffer between the Morrison Ranch community to the west and the proposed ranch development. Some of the amenities that are proposed within this portion of the project would be benches, a multi-use path, and the design of the white split-rail fencing that matches the rest of Morrison Ranch. The multifamily medium is approximately 14.92 acres, and there will be 220 units, which consists of 10 two-story buildings with 10 units in each building. The project shows a 41.8% open space where 40 is required. You can see some of the amenities. They are, you've got pickleball, playground, dog park. You've got the pool and amenity center there, which is multi-story. Here is one of the two types of buildings for the multifamily medium. This, the, has two color schemes. This is the first one. It has board and bed and siding with stone and metal accents, and there's two roof types. They are shingle and standing seam metal with a max height of 35 feet. Here are some of the renderings provided by the applicant. This shows the buildings a little more distinctly than just the elevations that were provided by the applicant. Here is the amenity center and the poolhouse along the same types of design themes. The next zoning district is the mixed-use small. This is approximately nine, a little over nine acres. There are seven three-story buildings, each with 28 to 30 units, for a total of 215 units. And amenities include, similar to the mixed, or the multifamily medium, there's an amenity center, there's gaming areas, dog park, and they're providing 25.6% landscaping where 20% is required. The mixed-use small, it does have actually live-work units. They are here on the, oh, on the end, that you can't really see. I can see it on my screen, but I can't see it on yours. So these two buildings have three live-work units, which that consists of commercial office space on the ground floor, and the two floors above are living. Here is one of the 28 plex, the East Stack, and a rendering of the other color scheme. Apologize for that. And here is the 31 plex. And these are the commercial spaces. So these commercial spaces, they are right here on the end. They actually face the next phase, so they have more of that modern agrarian look to them, so that they seamlessly integrate into the mixed, into the GC portion, which is after this one. Mixed-use large. So this zoning district is 11.77 acres. There's going to be eight three-story buildings, each with, well, seven of the buildings will have 33 units. One will have 30. For total units on this portion of the project is 294 units. And there's 38,320 square feet of ground, ground floor commercial as required by 2873. There's also almost 24% landscaping where 20 is required. And on the site plan, it is this building and this building, and I think there was one more live-work unit over here. So those are also considered commercial ground floor for the live-work units. And there are also the two buildings on this side that actually face Power Road, but they are within the mixed-use large zoning district. Here is one of the 30 plexes, as well as the rendering provided by the applicant. The 33 plex, they're very similar in colors and materials. And here are the commercial spaces that will also integrate into the commercial corner I will be going over next. These are the two buildings that will be facing Power Road. This is the general commercial corner, the northwest corner. There are four commercial buildings that are approximately 5,000 square feet each. They are oriented around the circular pop plaza for gathering. And just to the, this is where the other buildings in the mixed-use small are facing this portion to integrate the design. Again, we've got the elevations showing the commercial spaces and their modern agrarian look. And in the study session in April, I know that the, one of the items that was brought up by the commission was the loading spaces in the 14-foot walls. The applicant chose to do a 14-foot fence with living plants and vines on that to mask that from view. The next section is the general commercial. This is the big portion of the commercial. There are four retail restaurant buildings that are about 6,900 square feet each. There are two additional commercial buildings. One is this little guy right here, and the standalone that's right on the other side of this one. There's also four quick-serve restaurants primarily along Power, and two commercials, and two restaurants that are standalone. Here is one of the restaurant elevations and a rendering from the applicant. And some more rendering for what this entrance is going to look like with the quick-service restaurant elevation and the commercial facing Power. This portion is the southeast corner. It's about 10 and a half acres. At this point, it's proposed with a convenience store that will have gas pumps, not only for passenger vehicles, but also semi-trucks. There's also a quick-service restaurant and an oil change. Lot 26 is shown on there, would need to come in for a separate design review since it's not included as part of this one. Here are the elevations of what those buildings will look like. It's still incorporated into the overall modern agrarian type of theme with the same colors and materials. And the industrial portion, there's 211 acres of industrial. It does include three different phases, as well as a restricted area. So the restricted area is in, is these two buildings right here. It's 18.28 acres restricted by ordinance 2872. There's a required 280-foot setback from the western border, max height of 35 for the building, no illuminated signage on the west side, and enhanced design criteria for the buildings. One thing with the industrial, all lighting on this portion of the project within 100 feet of the multifamily can be no higher than 14 feet in height for the parking lot, and that also goes for buildings outside of that 100-foot line. The applicant has requested to have an increased height on the buildings, or increased height on the lighting for the buildings. So they've asked for, they've provided additional lighting findings. It is typical of most industrial development to have security lighting at 25 feet, and staff is in support of that, that request. And once again, I've got the phasing plan on there in case you don't remember it as clearly as I do all the time. And here's some of the renderings. Most of the buildings are very similar with the colorings, and so I only have one on here for you. The applicant has had four meetings with neighbors. The applicant's also been in regular communication with the neighbors regarding this project. Staff has received 38 letters of objection from surrounding property owners. However, the letters are expressing their concerns over the amount of units, not the overall design of the development. And should the commission find that this is an appropriate design and the preliminary plat is acceptable, staff recommends approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you for the presentation. Question for you, on the presentation you had, you had elevations for a lot of the commercial pads, and they're kind of specific to the uses that are going in there, restaurants, and I think there was a oil change place or something like that. So are those buildings going to actually get those uses, meaning tenants lined up for these buildings, and essentially once they're built, they're just moving in, slapping their sign on? Or are those commercial buildings going to have to come back where there's a real tenant involved, and they want a brand, they want the building to be more reflected up their brand?
Chair Munt, Commissioner Anderson. This is the master site plan. So generally, the master site plan establishes the overall design of the site and circulation and such. And there's usually a phase or two sometimes that you'll see complete building elevations, and all of that is part of the design review. With this, they have provided floor plans and elevations and all of that for these various buildings. So if they are in the appropriate phase and they get their permit, they would be able to build that. As far as signage, the master sign program would need to be applied for and approved before any signage would be permitted on the site. So that'll be another application that comes before the commission. As far as having to go back through the process, if they were going, if an applicant came forward wanting to change the design of any of these buildings, they would have to be in substantial conformance with what could be approved today. If they're not going to be in substantial conformance, there would be a different application process essentially for that, because this is the design that was also sort of approved, not sort of approved. The overall layout and design was approved as part of the rezoning applications. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I believe so. So essentially, what's being presented here on the design review portion of this application is, this is what's being proposed and built, and this is what's going to be built. But if something happens down the line where, you know, one of the tenants wants to change the building, you know, or whatever, they're going to come back before us. So this kind of, because, I mean, this is a very detailed application packet, so I think it's kind of safe to assume that the master developer does have tenants lined up to kind of move in probably a good amount of these spaces. I mean, overall, I really like the design. I think the architect... I think the architects did a great job on this, on this site, especially with the history of how we got to this point. So I think it's going to be a really nice added feature to that community in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Vice Chair.
Nicole, looking through this based on what's already approved, is there any phase or any parcel throughout the entire property where they're either reducing setbacks, reducing open space, increasing the number, increasing the size, or are they undershooting on everything? Or where are they overshooting on anything?
Chair Munt, Vice Chair Fay, this application is not proposing any deviations or changes, reductions to the overall development criteria. And the application has been reviewed for ordinance 2872, 2873, the LDC, Commercial Design Guidelines, Industrial Guidelines, as well as the Mixed Use Guidelines. And it's not, the proposed request today is not requesting any changes to what would be allowed per the code.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner DeGervina.
Nicole, that's a very large development, 311 acres, and it looks like the only residential there is going to be 729 apartments. There's no single family at all in that large development. That's very close to Morrison Ranch. Am I correct in saying that?
Chair Munt, Commissioner DeGervina, you are correct. There is multifamily medium, there is mixed-use small, which does have the residential component, and there's also the mixed-use large, not single-family, just essentially multifamily development.
But these are going to be all for rent, not to buy?
That's what I understand.
It's just, I think it's a nice development, but I just wish there was some single family in there. A large, large area that I think, obviously, it's probably too late to even consider that at this, at this point, but, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner DeGervina. Anyone else? Nicole, was the applicant here wishing to speak to you now?
Yes, the applicant is here and does have a presentation for you.
Chair, Commission Member Sean Lake, 1744 South Val Vista, here on behalf of IndyCap and Colmina with us here this evening. We have representatives from both those organizations. We also have representatives, design consultants here to answer specific questions, because when you get into design, you don't want to hear from Sean. But we have representatives to talk about the commercial, residential, industrial, or the landscape package if you have specific questions. And so as questions come up, we can go there. First off, this is kind of a big deal. This project has been going on for about three and a half years, and we're now getting to the stage of incorporating the zoning, which was approved two years ago, a little over. We were hoping to be on the last agenda, when you, when it was on the agenda and there was a little misstep, if you will, on the advertisement. So you got to get a sneak peek last month, but we're here this month and we're hoping we're able to move forward with this application. I'm going to go through this really quick, because Nicole did such an amazing job. I don't need to be repetitive, and I don't need to sit up here and speak to justify my This is a list of what we're here to do. The zoning was approved two years ago, 750 units were approved. We're coming in at 729. That was a topic of discussion during that zoning process, but it was approved for 750 units, and we did come in below that at 725 units. So we're here to talk about a plat, we're here to talk about open space and site plan and the design. And as specific users come in, if they do want to change from the design, as commission members brought up, they'll have to come back through the process if they don't want to comply. This project does comply with the code, it does comply with the zoning, it does comply with the phasing. So we've made a great deal of effort to make sure that we're not asking for deviations, and we're not asking for anything different than what was approved by this commission and the council two years ago. I'll just go through, the open space on the, on the west side was a big deal. It's effectively a bunch of football fields that run the length of the property, or a mile long. It's a big, wide, open space, that's phase one. Rarely do you get a developer who will go in and build first phase, a monstrous, huge open space buffer, and that's what they're doing, including turf in that area. So the first thing coming out of the ground is going to be that landscape area. That will create a huge buffer for the residential and the industrial, as you can see on the north side, a big buffer, about 280 feet to 800 feet to the industrial, to create a big buffer on that west side, I should say, I saw north, top, on the west side. So you'll have this big buffer that goes in phase one, and it will look something like this, that the staff already showed you in their presentation. We're also here to talk about the commercial site plan. The commercial was another important aspect. Staff brought, went through each of the aspects of the commercial development, but I'm particularly interested in the commercial that's going to happen up across from what I know is the Field of Dreams or that area there, where we're going to have four buildings, where we're going to have some restaurants in that area, and you're going to have some pedestrian walkability between those commercial, restaurant-type, retail buildings up along Elliott, and then as you go in towards the development along that open space, we've provided a great deal of connectivity, pedestrian connectivity within this project, as well as connectivity to the Morrison Ranch. So we're hoping that when this comes out of the ground and we have restaurants and other places to come shop, that people within Morrison Ranch will walk through that big 18-acre open space area and come eat, or get some ice cream, or, or just spend a weekend night. And so we're hoping to get some pedestrian activity associated with the pedestrian connectivity we're providing. The phasing, we are following the phasing, you're, we're going to keep using, this is kind of the bible of this project, is the phasing plan. We're keeping, holding to that phasing plan, and it's very detailed. I'm not going to go into it, but many of you remember that phasing and what we agreed to the neighbors and how this would play out. We looked at several of the issues and addressed with staff from the study session back in April from this commission, and we worked with staff to make changes, including looking at the multifamily and the elevations, and looking at the loading areas and the different types of screen wall as opposed to masonry walls, vegetative screen walls and loading dock areas. So we worked with staff on incorporating some of that stuff. We looked at the signage. This is not approval of the sign package, but you can see the theme that's been pretty consistent throughout, to have a really nice sign package along the perimeter of the development. So it represents a very nice, high-end development that I think we're going to look at at the end of the day, and be excited to go shop there hopefully, and live, and hopefully work as well. So here's kind of some renderings of what we envisioned that to be this, what I believe this is along Power Road, kind of an entrance into the industrial development. Like I said, I'm not going to go over all the detail that Nicole did, I just wanted to highlight some of the renderings and pictures and stress some of the points that were important to the neighbors as we worked through the process over the last three and a half years. Like I said, we have design consultants if you have specific questions, but at this time, I would request you approve this, both the, both applications of the plat, and also the site plan, landscape plan, et cetera, and let this project continue down the path. This is not the end, this is just another step in the development process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Lake? Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, well, I will bring up the public comment that we have here, a number of cards. The first one, Baresh Oderu, does not wish to speak, but says, please consider the height of the LI, it will block the mountain view from my home. And then have Matt Dragger, and he is in favor of the item, and he does not wish to speak. And Blake Hillis is in favor of the item, also does not wish to speak. That was the extent of all the comment cards that I have, just out of a courtesy, is there anyone else here that wished to speak on this item number 12A or B? All right, not seeing anyone, I will then, is there someone? Oh, did you wish to speak on this?
I just want to bring up, is that the architect, or?
Well, what, if, I guess if you wanted to, come on up to the podium and then state your name, and then you can make your comment. Otherwise, it won't go into the record, and so we're not supposed to have it that way. So yeah, just state your name and then go ahead.
My name is Mark Karabi, and I just want to bring up, is that the architect, or is that the applicant, or?
I can't, I can't honestly answer.
He's mentioned three times, or a few times, about Morrison Ranch, but there is also now another development that was developed two years ago called Warner Meadow. So it's not just about Morrison Ranch. The neighbor here, his backyard is literally to the backyard of it, so it's not that we're in favor, we're not disinfavor, but there are other communities that back up to the development. So if you, just, it's just not about Morrison Ranch. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And someone from the staff may want you to fill out a little yellow card. I don't know, I want to make sure that I do everything legal, but I can't force it. Okay. With no other public comment then, I'll close the public forum and bring it up here to see if anyone has any questions, concerns, discussion, or anything else of that nature. Commissioner Simon?
I'll just kick us off. I greatly appreciate the distance that we've come on this, having sat on the commission through the whole process. It has been a long, arduous process, and I appreciate the applicant working diligently to try to come to a good end. With regards to the project at hand, the site plan, I have no issue with the site plan. I mean, obviously, we could all dream of things that we would love to put in this space if we had the millions of dollars that it would take to build there, buy the property, and go forward. With regards to the approval and the design review, I'm actually excited to see this project go in. I think that it is a fresh look on the multifamily, the multi-use, and the commercial space. I think it's going to be a nice gateway, so I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Simon. Vice Chair.
Thank you. I'm actually not a huge fan of the project, but this current iteration, the design review is entirely, the applicant's entirely asking for what's already approved or less. So this, this to me is, but for community involvement, I almost would have thought this could have gone on consent. That's how straightforward I think it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other? Commissioner Davis?
I just want to say how much I appreciate how far this project has come. I know I had a lot of comments at the study session. They implemented most of them, just down to two comments, but they're not things that I just, it's not something that we can affect. One is just I still have concerns about that cross-dock facility next to the multifamily, but I know that's ship-sailed, I know that's there. They have done some nice things with the elevations there, and I appreciate that, and the buffering with the landscaping. I'd still love to see that corner not have a drive-through at Elliott and Power, but, so if you guys decide to reorient that and do something different, that would be great, but I understand that that's what's coming forward, and it does look like it's changed from a fast-food pad to maybe a bank or something like that, which I appreciate. So I'm in support of this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Simon?
Yeah, just one more thing really quick. I actually forgot to point this out in the staff report. Under the background discussion on the dates, you mentioned October 5, 2022, the planning commission held the first public hearing, October 20th, it should be 2022, it states 2020. The planning commission recommended approval of the GP 2205 and Z 2205. So in the, in the staff report, the dates just need to be addressed.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Simon. Commissioner Anderson?
Sounds like we have like glowing recommendations everywhere, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, if that's okay?
Feel free, yes, sir.
Get this guy across the finish line. For the first one, 12A, approve the findings of fact, and S 2401, the ranch preliminary plat and open space plan.
Do I have a second? Second? Second from Vice Chair, any discussion? Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you.
And then I'd like to continue on for the DR 24-06, and recommend approval.
We have a motion to approve?
Seconded.
Seconded by the Vice Chair. Please cast your vote. Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you. Okay, moving on then to item number 13, UP 25-15, South Anchor, ground-floor residential units, and Ms. Kristin Devine.
The case I have for you tonight is going to be for a use permit for the South Anchor development. This use permit is to permit ground-floor residential within the HBC zoning district. The site is located on Gilbert and Elliott at the northwest corner. It's approximately 2.8 acres. Just a bit of items to touch on before we dive into the presentation, there is a development agreement for this site, and within that development agreement, there are some criteria that need to be met. One is which horizontal mixed use is acceptable as long as uses of commercial and residential are integrated, and it's a single-phase development. The residential unit count should be 175 to 203 units. The ground-floor residential should only be considered for the northwest and east internal elevations. And any elevations on the ground floor that face west shall be of a brownstone style with at minimum front doors facing ash, courtyards, stoops, and/or row-like home attributes. All right, so again, the request is for ground-floor residential, those units will be on the west, north, and internal east elevations to the site. No ground-floor units will face Gilbert Road or Elliott Road. The Ash Street ground-floor units, again, are required to be that brownstone style. Seen here is the site plan, just for some context on the layout of the site, there's going to be two buildings. On the hard corner of Gilbert and Elliott is a commercial building, roughly 15,000-ish square feet. The rest is going to be a residential structure and a parking structure wrapped by the residential. The units will consist of studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom style. Right now, it's proposed at 175 units, again, with 14,600 square feet of commercial. Those uses are estimated to be restaurant and retail. Between the two uses is a pastel-style walkway that will connect the commercial and the residential, with patio seating, lighting between them, things to integrate them together. All right, and since we're here to talk about the ground-floor residential, this is the floor plan for the first floor. There's 31 ground-floor units proposed. Again, there's 175 units in total. There is approximately 10,860 square feet of residential indoor amenities, which are included on the first floor. There's 5,470 square feet of retail and 3,930 square feet of restaurant. All right, and just for a little bit of context, here are the elevations, at this point, the design review has not gone forward yet, we are still working on a handful of these elevations, specifically some of the residential and the parking garage elements. Just a 3D rendering to give you a picture, since I know you guys haven't really seen it yet, it goes mostly to RDC. All right, and to be eligible for a conditional use permit, they need to meet four findings of fact. Staff does feel like they have met these four findings of fact, and we do recommend that you recommend approval of UP 2515, the South Anchor site for ground-floor residential. I'm available for your questions.
Thank you, Kristin. Anyone have questions, they want to kick off with Kristin? Commissioner Davis looked like she did, but she did not, in fact. Okay. All right, once again, thoroughly did everything so well that they're speechless. Is the developer, or applicant rather, here and wishing to speak?
They do have a presentation if you would like to hear it.
Would you guys like to hear? Would you guys like to hear? I don't think it's necessary. I'll, I'll go through the public comment and then, I'm sure you prepared a lot and I apologize. I don't mean to shirk responsibility here, but I'll go in to do the public cards and then if we need additional granular detail, we can reopen that. Okay, so first we have Blake Hillis. Nope, that was the last one. He's already spoke, so we go to item three. Okay, we have UP 25. Doralese Machado-Liddell, she wishes to speak. Please come to the podium, state your name. I'm sure you know this by now and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Doralese Machado-Liddell. I am Gilbert resident and I do reside in the Lacy Track area, right in this area of this project. What I wish to speak on is the development agreement. The development agreement is an agreement between the town council and the developer. And in that, I asked for the development agreement and staff did provide that, three development agreements. My main concern is fact finding number two. I do not believe that it meets the town council approved development agreement. It requires brownstone design, brownstone design, not row-like, brownstone design. According to the development agreement that I have, it states any such west-facing residential living space shall, shall be of a brownstone design, is as determined by the town of Gilbert Development Services Agreement, whatever. My question to staff is where is row-like housing in any of these development agreements? And I have three of them. I've asked staff to point it out. I have not received anything. I have looked through this. I may have missed it, but I'm asking that staff point out where row-like design is in it. It, it is a different design. We have older residential area and it doesn't state that. So I ask that number four, change the recommendation and remove row-like attributes to brownstone design as required in the development agreement. I don't know if town staff, and maybe it's in this agreement and I can't find it, where they can change the development agreement. The town council is the only body that can change this development agreement. So I ask that, the commission asks the town staff to provide the location of row-like housing. This is a conditional use permit, but this is about design. So they're putting design in a conditional use permit. It's about allowing residential units on the ground floor. But they're changing it by adding this design and not going back to the brownstone. So that's what I ask. I ask you as a commission to please ask the question, please provide the direction. And also, if, if the development agreement is going to be amended, then that needs to go to town council and respectfully, not the planning commission. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
And I have copies if you wish to look at them.
Thank you. Okay. And now we also have Alan Fitzgerald wishes to speak. Please come up and state your name and three minutes.
I found the on-off switch. I'm Alan Fitzgerald, resident of Gilbert for almost 40 years. Business owner and a property owner in downtown Gilbert Heritage District. I'm very excited to see a development on this corner. It's been absent of use for far too long. I'm going to miss the Christmas tree guy comes to that lot, but this is a better solution for sure. Don't mean to sound like a broken record, but I have to come back to absolute foundational point about being a stakeholder in the Gilbert Heritage District and that is the Heritage Village Center zoning. We're ignoring that once again. It's put together by a number of people who were a varied cross-section of stakeholders in the Heritage District. Again, thousands of hours of effort, disagreement, argument and finally consensus and approved for our general plan. And this is changing that again and we should not allow that. It doesn't suit any enhancement to the Heritage District, but residential on the bottom floor. The plans clearly states second, third, fourth stories, the residential ground floor needs to be commercial, retail. We don't have enough of that in the Heritage District and now we've diminished it again. So I would like to ask that we not approve this conditional permit. As you go through this document, it talks very specifically about intending to be within the Heritage District, the Heritage Village zoning and, and it is not. It's, it's breaking that wide open by putting that in a lower level. So I would like the Planning and Zoning Commission to look at this. And one of the statements, it says that it would further the goals of the Heritage District and I have to strongly disagree. It is not further, furthering those goals. It is actually corrupting those goals. Love to see the development there. I'd like to see what's going on. This attribute of that development needs to be disallowed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Once again, just to be clear, is there anyone else that wished to speak on this item? Okay, thank you. All right, then I will close the public comment and bring it, huh? Oh, that's right. The applicant, if you would like to come up and, and I get to at least discuss the comments that were made. I'd like to give you that chance. Thanks to Commissioner Anderson reminding me of my duties.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, Commissioner. Hannah Bleem with, with the Morris Ball on behalf of Keeley Properties. I'm not Adam Ball, believe it or not, but he had to run to another hearing. But I just wanted to make a comment about the zoning district, the HVC zoning district that it's in. I do appreciate the support for the development and the enhancement on this corner. I just wanted to note that it is, the CUP is an option within the zoning district. So it's not a prohibited use or anything in the zoning district. This is a process that is allowed in the district, so just wanted to note that. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you very much, Miss Bleem. Anyone have any questions or comments for her at this time? Okay. Thank you very much. With that then, I will close the public comment portion and bring it up to the dais for discussion or motions. Who wants to kick off some? Commissioner Anderson?
I have a question for staff. So can you just kind of touch upon the, the point that the resident made on the wording of row versus brown? Is there, can you just explain that a little bit more and is there any validity to that or is it just semantics?
So Chairman, Commissioner Anderson, the wording for row-like attributes comes from the first rendition of this development agreement. It was not amended in the second edition, so it does still take effect. It's in section 3.2.4.2. It says at a minimum, individual front doors facing Ash Street shall have courtyard stoops or row-like attributes. There's a couple of other items in there as well. Ash Street shall be oriented such that it provides a vibrant street frontage encouraging pedestrian scale and walkability. But that, that's a section that it's in. It's in the first version of the development agreement that was not changed in the second amendment. I think the second amendment is where it specifically says brownstone, but it was supplemental to row-like attributes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for staff? Okay. Thank you again, Kristin. Anyone else just want to have any discussion? Commissioner Anderson?
Now I have a comment. So I really love this project. I think it's a great project for that corner. Again, I used to get my Christmas trees from that place too, but I haven't seen him there in a long time. But I love the design of this. I love the use of what's happening here. I think this is going to be an awesome bookend for the Heritage District where you're on Elliott, you have this and then you travel up and then you have what's being developed in that, the empty dirt lot there, north of Bario Queen. So I think this, this is going to be a nice bookend and then what's happening between, should now get a lot of foot traffic where there is that one two-story building that's next to the liquor store that for some reason restaurants just can't stay active there. So I think this will help thrive that business. I think the upstairs on that is empty with business, so it help, it should help occupy that building. So I think this is a great project and I hope it goes through and gets built.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll.
Vice Chair?
I concur with Commissioner Anderson. This is a, this corner's been vacant and I think this is a good use. I think it fits very much with the character of the Heritage District and the feel of what we're looking for. And it's north of Elliott, which I think is.
Commissioner Simon?
So I, quick question, I guess first. This, this is simply a use permit. We will be seeing this in design review later, correct? RDC will do?
Yeah, Commissioner Simon, the RDC will, the deciding factor for this, for the designer view.
Okay, so we're just looking at use, okay.
Yes.
With regards to the ground use, I mean, where, where we're looking, that west and north side, they're going to be tucked away. I don't think that they would be good spots for retail, although I agree with the, the citizens. I, I would much rather see some, some more retail on the bottom, something to keep people in the district. But if we're going to have residential in the district, I think that's going to, that's going to bolster quite a bit. And I just don't think it's viable to have that, what we'll call retailer office tucked behind there. So I, I, I like this. I'm not necessarily 100% a fan of the design that's in the packet, but that's, looks like it's probably going to be kicked around a bit more, so that's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone else or a motion?
I'll go ahead and motion this one.
Anderson.
Did you, Vice Chair have something to?
I was going to do it too, so I'll second what you say.
All right. Make the findings of fact and approve UP 2515, South Anchor, conditional use permit.
Motion from Commissioner Anderson. Do I have a second?
I second that.
We have a second from Vice Chair. Any additional discussion? Then please cast your vote. Motion carries, six one. Thank you very much. Okay, now moving on to item 14, which as we've discussed in the pre, or the agenda discussion, is going to be continued to November 5th, 2025. If I could get a motion on that?
Chairman, make a motion to continue item 14, the Aura Farming Santan until November 5th of 2025.
We have a motion from Vice Chair to move item 14 to November 5th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Simon. Cast your vote. Motion carries, seven zero. Okay, without any further ado, we will move on to the belle of the ball, item number 15, GP 2501 Willowbrook and Z 2502 Willowbrook.
Excuse me, Chair. I need to recuse myself on this project.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Gage, please enjoy the reprieve. You shall be missed. And for this, once again, we get to see Kristin, so take it away. Thank you.
Are you tired of me yet?
Absolutely not.
All right. So the final case I have for you today is a general plan amendment and rezoning for the Willowbrook community. The site is located on the southeast corner of 156th Street and Riggs. This is just east of Val Vista. The request before you tonight is for a general plan amendment from residential zero to one dwelling units per acre to residential two to 3.5 dwelling units per acre. A proposed rezoning with a PAD from single-family 43 to single-family 6. Some of those proposed deviations will include setbacks and lot coverage percentages. Just for some context on the surrounding area, again, that current zoning right now is SF 43. It's currently used as an RWCD adjacent lot. They are proposing a zoning of SF 6 with a PAD. Some nearby zoning are county lots to the west. You have SF 43, which is going to be retained by RWCD. You have some SF 35 across Riggs Road, SF 15 to the community directly to the south. And then just over the canal, you have a Dora Trails, which is a hodgepodge of zoning districts, SF 6, 7, 8, kind of a little bit of everything. So the proposed development is going to be 91 lots. It's on approximately 26 acres. Each of those lots is going to be a minimum of 6,600 square feet. That averages out to roughly 3.45 dwelling units per acre, which does meet the intent of the Santan character area, which should not exceed 3.5 dwelling units per acre. For the site, there is 18% of open space proposed. And you can see on this image here, there are red dots on a handful of the lots to the bottom. That's lots 76 through 91. Those lots are all designated to be single story to act as a bit of a buffer from the Marathon Ranch community to the south. Just for a better picture of what those lot sizes look like, I know this is really small. I'm sorry I didn't think about it when I put it on the screen. But the lot sizes are going to range from about 6,720 square feet to 7,575 square feet. 53 of those lots, which is over half of them, do exceed 7,000 square feet, which would be the equivalent of an SF 7 zoning district. And to touch on the specific deviations that are being requested, I have a couple of boxes here. The boxes in green are going to be items that the applicant is exceeding. So for SF 6, the minimum zoning, I'm sorry, the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. They are proposing a minimum of 6,600 square feet. The minimum depth of a lot is 100 feet. They are proposing 120 feet. The maximum height permitted is 30 feet and two stories. They are keeping that with the caveat that lots 76 through 91, as I mentioned earlier, have a one-story restriction on them. They are also exceeding the open space requirement of 10% by providing 18%. And then that brings us to the items outlined in red, which are the deviations being requested. We have a reduction in the side setback, so typically per code it's five feet and 10 feet. The applicant's requesting five feet and five feet. They are requesting an increase in lot coverage percentage by 5% for both single story and two-story. So that will be 50% and 45%. And there are some smaller items asterisked on the right here that don't really fit in the table, but they are requesting the elimination of the staggering requirement for front, front home layouts. And then additionally, no additional setback requirement for any lots that side or back up to an arterial aura collector. So that would be like lots 10 through 15 backing up to Riggs. They would just meet the standard rear setback as opposed to the increased setback that our code would require typically. And while we're on the deviation page, I did want to note that the proposed rezoning, it does meet the intent of the Santan character area. We do still have a little bit of concern with the number of deviations that are being requested, just because it is vacant land. There is room to work with. It's kind of a blank slate. But yep, thank you. All right. So there's been two neighborhood meetings that have been held for this property. The first one on September 17th, I apologize, that should say 24, not 25, where approximately 62 attendees turned out according to the sign-in sheets. Concerns include traffic density, landscaping at the southern boundary, which is adjacent to the Marathon Ranch community, the SF 15 zoning district and the desire for one-story only homes. In the second neighborhood meeting, the sign-in sheets captured approximately 49 attendees. Concerns again included traffic, specifically requests for a signal at 156th Street. Density again. again, and again, the request for single-story homes at minimum, at least on the southern boundary. We have received 10 opposition emails to date as well. Some study session feedback that we received from you in April included concern with the number of deviations. The lot coverage deviation at the time was approximately 10 to 15% higher than it currently is. The applicants reduced that to just a 5% increase now. Front and side setback deviations and density, and then some of those changes that have been accommodated due to the feedback from neighbors and the commission would be a reduction in the number of deviations being requested. Again, that lot coverage deviation, front setback deviation is no longer being requested. The only thing that remains is just that staggering, to not have to require that. And then the addition of single-story restrictions for lots 76 to 91, which are on that southern boundary. And with that, we do recommend approval of the general plan amendment and the rezoning, just with the caveat that we do still have some minor concerns with the number of deviations being requested, but support the zoning in general. And I'm available for your questions.
Thank you very much. Once again, Kristen, anyone have any questions that they would like to kick off? Okay. I'm going to assume the developer is here and would like to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission. Brendan Ray, 2325 East Camelback, here on behalf of Lennar Homes. We're certainly excited. Personally, I'm excited to be able to stand before you tonight and talk about a single-family subdivision. I know you've heard a few this year already, but it certainly is exciting to know that the single-family market is still alive and is looking to add additional product to the town of Gilbert, especially when the opportunities for single-family developments, if we look at everything, continue to dwindle as the town approaches build-out. But Lennar went out and sought an opportunity to do this, entering into agreement with RWCD, to take down this land and provide another great community, consistent with what Lennar's done, not only in the town, but elsewhere. You're all very familiar with the site, and we're certainly appreciative of staff's thoroughness of the report of Kristen's presentation. She certainly stole a lot of what I'm going to say, and so I'm just going to dig into the details a little bit deeper relative to kind of the neighborhood outreach. And you're going to see a common theme, and I'm sure, I know there's a number of neighbors here tonight that I'm sure are going to still continue to say some of these same concerns. But we did have a neighborhood meeting back in September of '24. 60, I counted 62 neighbors, and then we had a follow-up one. And the reason for that time was we were exploring a lot of options, a lot of ways to figure things out, including how much land did RWCD need, if there was an ability for us to expand the site. I could go on about why there was the difference, but ultimately, at the end of the day, trying to look at how we could kind of make changes with some of the concerns that we heard, recognizing that some of the comments relative to traffic, we probably never, ever will be able to address unless we're, you know, considerably substantially less number of homes. And then you can see there on March 22nd, 27th, I counted 48 in the thing, and I think Kristen counted 49, so maybe we're off there. But again, you can kind of see similar concerns to that. So I apologize for the graphic, but it's important to note that this was the site plan that was presented at that September '24 neighborhood meeting, where we were proposing a total of 116 lots. And those lot sizes were smaller than what is before you tonight. Back then, we're proposing 45 by 115 lots. We had the entrance further to the north on 156th Street, and you can see there, we had a fire access onto Riggs Road. But as we went through and heard comments and feedback, we did make some changes, obviously notably reducing the number of lots from 116 to 91, increasing the lot size to a minimum of 55 by 120. And you can see the difference in the lot square footage, substantial increase in that minimum lot square footage. There's a few other key things that I'll point out relative to that March '25 neighborhood meeting. One was moving the entrance a little bit further south along 156th. The other one was providing a right-in, right-out access onto Riggs Road. And then I've highlighted along the south, because what we did there was increase the depth of those lots. They far exceed the minimum that we've put into the development standards table tonight. So Kristen very accurately pointed out where we are tonight in terms of the number of lots, in terms of 18% open space, in terms of a one-story restriction along the south and along our western edge as, at the south side. And I can go into a lot more details, if you'd like, relative to this. I know it's not in front of you tonight, but this is the housing product. There, Lennar does a great job and has a good reputation. And these homes, they plan three one-story homes, and they will have two story plans. And the square footage of those homes range from 23, roughly 2,300 square foot, all the way up to 3,300 square foot, so a wide range. In terms of garages, that's inevitably a question that sometimes comes up. These are all three-car garages. Sometimes it's a two-car garage with a tandem. The other times, it's a two-car garage with a split, single-car garage in the driveway. You can see that in the lower right-hand, how that split occurs. So one of the things that I wanted to touch on is kind of the lot size. I know we're going to talk about a number of things tonight potentially, but I wanted just to emphasize kind of where the lots are. And I know we're requesting 50 by 120. And the reason that we're not minimum 125, as you see on the screen now, is because there are a few conditions in this development where it's at a knuckle, or it's at a end of a lot, where we've got a site visibility triangle that will clip one side of the lot, thereby reducing it from the minimum 120, or reducing it from what we are proposing. And that's why we're requesting the minimum, is because we might have one side of a lot, or the curve affront you're all very familiar with, that doesn't meet that, what the lot sizes that we're proposing on the screen. And so you can see there, the mix of the lots. Kristen put up the table. That's from the pre-plat, but what that table really boils down to is the average square footage of these homes is about 71, almost 7,200 of the lots is about 7,200 square feet. The other thing that I know we've wanted to touch on and talk about is kind of cross-sections of what's going on. This is a cross-section of 156th Street looking north. And what you'll see there is, there's a lot of existing condition, but when you start over onto our site, obviously, you get into the edge of right-of-way, existing PUE, and then landscape, and all told, so that what happens with respect to those lots on the west side of 156 and the homes there were a total of about 160 feet, so half a football field separates the homes. On the south, we were very mindful. Marathon Ranch, which is the community south of us, they have a pretty good condition in that they have a 30-foot landscape setback, a landscape tract that runs along their northern boundary. We match that with a 30-foot landscape setback on our side. And as I mentioned, those lots along that southern side are deeper. They're 130 feet deep. And so we think we're doing lots of good things in that regard. As we look at some of the deviations, I know that staff may have a question or two about it, but as we look at them, we think that we're doing a lot of good things, well over with a larger average lot size, with the restrictions that we've got in place, exceeding the open space. And certainly, the deviations that we're requesting for are something that is certainly consistent with other single-family developments that the town has approved in the past, relative to the slight increase in the lot coverage, the reduction in the side yard setbacks. There haven't been a lot that have come before this group, at least under the current makeup, and some of you might remember when it was a lot of single-family subdivisions. But having done a few in the town over my time, the deviations that we are requesting are certainly consistent with other developments that have been built and approved within the town. And part of the other reason is that we're requesting these deviations is because as time happens, buyers have different expectations as to what they want and see in a home. They want homes with larger square footage, which Lennar is providing on these larger lots. And so again, there's a lot more detail that I can go into if we need to. But with that, happy to answer any questions, and we would request your recommendation for approval, consistent with staff's recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. Ray? Vice Chair?
I do. Thanks, Brendan. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Ray. If I, you're asking to go down to 6,000-square-foot lots, but your actual proposal is considerably larger than 6,000-square-foot lots. None of them are actually 6,000, are they? They're in the, what, an average of 7,100, 7,400, something like that?
Through the Chair, Vice Chair Fay, I'm sure if we got Kristen's presentation up, she'd put the table up again if we need to. I happen to have the table here in front of me as well. As I look at the lot area, I believe our minimum lot size is 6,875 square feet. And as Kristen indicated, over half of the lots are over 7,000 square feet. So we're far exceeding that kind of minimum requirement.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move into the public comment. On the cards, as all of you know, you've filled them out. There's a box where it says whether you wish to speak or not. I'm going to go through the ones that did check, wish to speak, and then when I get to the others, if for some reason you had not checked the box and you do wish to, we can go through that at that point. So first, Karen Wickens, she's opposed the item, wishes to speak, and her comment is would like street improvements on 156th Street completed before housing. So please come up. State your name, and then three minutes, please.
Thank you. My name is Karen Wickens. I live in the Marathon Ranch subdivision. We moved out to that area because it's a more rural character, and we enjoyed more grass, more space. We're concerned about the number of homes going into the narrow Willowbrook subdivision. It's one and a half times the size of the Marathon Ranch subdivision, and it's going to increase ethic quite a bit at 156 and Riggs Road. On Monday, I was leaving subdivision to go to work. It was the second car in the intersection, and it took me seven minutes to turn left on Riggs Road. This morning, I left. There were four cars in front of me. It took me 22 minutes to get out onto Riggs Road. The cars are not going 45 miles an hour. They are speeding at least at 55 miles an hour. It's very dangerous. Coming back into the subdivision, going eastbound on Riggs Road, I have been almost rear-ended multiple times because people won't slow down, even though you have your right turn signal on. I just, it's not safe for us to be turning left at that intersection without a light. I know they did some traffic studies. If you look at the dates on those studies, some of them were at the end of COVID. People still weren't returning to work. I know some of our neighbors said they saw the camera, and the camera was facing down on the ground, so I think their study said there were 13 cars that left our subdivision in the morning that day, which is not true. So our biggest concern is safety, people leaving the subdivision, taking their kids to school. And we all want to get to work and home from work safely every day. If we had larger lots in that subdivision and not allowed the deviations that they're requesting, we would have less homes there and less traffic. Thanks for listening to our concerns.
Thank you. Okay, next up, I have Barbara and Barry Christman, wish to speak and are opposed. Same thing, ma'am. If you could just state your name, and then three minutes, turning on the microphone.
Good evening, Chairman and Commission. I'm Barbara Christman, and I'm a resident. My husband and I are residents of Marathon Ranch. We are the original homeowners there. Not being residents of our community, I truly appreciate the fact that you have read or will be reading the letters that we've sent, and also that you are listening to our input. Anyway, I speak on behalf of a lot of residents who were unable to come tonight because of other commitments. Unfortunately, they wanted to be here but weren't able to attend. We're pleased with the Willowbrook community home size, which I was first given 2,400 to 3,400 square feet with a starting price of 700,000, which will support our own home investments of 1.1 and 1.4 million dollars, and we would want nothing less than that size or that price. I understand from Lennar Homes' perspective that they want to build as many homes on that piece of property as they possibly can in order to, you know, that you would be willing to give them approval for. We appreciate that they have considered our homeowner input, but we hope that you will take the remaining concerns that we have into consideration before voting tonight. The density, and I know that there was a concern from the staff and also at your planning session, that there is a concern regarding density within that development. Every home has an impact regarding the density and traffic, and I ask you to deny reduction deviations to the building code as requested and rezone to at least an SF 7 for all lot sizes. And this would keep the development more open and not create a compacted canyon-street effect where two-story homes are concerned. A total of 10 feet between homes is also not acceptable because it's a fire safety concern for fire spread and accessing fire. Traffic safety, that was one of our community's major concerns from the very beginning of the traffic study. Marathon homeowners and residents of 156, this is our only way in and out of this development. We have no other choices. And the safety with traffic on Riggs is a great concern, especially during rush hour. The Willowbrook development will greatly impact those numbers. With 91 homes, the only way that they can make left is coming out onto 156th Street. There is no other way for them to make a left out of that development. In the traffic impact statement, I noticed the traffic counts for progression and platooning were taken in April of 2022. And as Karen stated, during that time, was the formula used for the present traffic counts on Riggs for now, was consideration given to the fact that April '22 was a great number of people still working from home, and also was the housing explosion in Queen Creek and Santan taken into consideration for, because that's a major artery to the 10? Since the traffic report and city do not support the traffic light, one way to increase traffic safety is to reduce the number of homes in Willowbrook. This would actually resolve all concerns, density, fire, and traffic safety. So I respectfully request that you deny Lennar's request for Z 25-01 and 02 Willowbrook, and instead consider rezoning to a larger SF, maybe seven or higher, and not allowing the deviations that they're asking for and keeping more to the building code. I appreciate your thoughtful consideration and careful planning to make this project the best that it can possibly be for everyone concerned. Thank you for your time and your dedication to the town of Gilbert.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, I have Doug Jensen, wishes to speak.
Hi, my name is Doug Jensen. I'm a resident of Marathon Ranch as well. Probably a reoccurring thing that you'll probably hear from most of us is the traffic situation coming off of 156th Street. I do appreciate some of the adjustments that have been made on the properties with the single units, especially where I have good friends and neighbors that back up against where the new development may go. Part of what I am concerned about is some of the proposals that we're seeing, and I am looking at the actual traffic study for the first time tonight. The platooning that they talk about was based on a baseline of April 14th, 2022, which is during our COVID restriction time period. We are seeing also as part of the current... We are seeing also as part of the current existing peak traffic hours, 13 cars out and 10 cars in during peak hours. I can tell you, the validity of this has been questioned by all that have seen the report. We don't believe it. We don't believe that can be accurate. We see this at 5:00 AM. We see 13 cars. What I'm also wondering too is when you show the actual map, I don't have the ability to pull that up. But of those 91 homes, if anybody wants to go westbound, they must go down 156th Street, which right now is just a two-way street. It does tee into what we call a 45 mile an hour road. But as has been stated, no one's going 45. So, to put the egress in there to turn eastbound is great. It's a great opportunity for us to get more cars up there. But there's no merging lanes, both out of the property, out of 156th, and there's no lanes coming into 156th. So, you are taking it at 45 miles an hour, braking, trying to turn in really quickly. And what you'll find typically, as I've noticed, is people come in fast enough that they're turning and doing kind of a larger turn, which obviously runs into the other type of traffic. So, with that being said, with the 91 homes and current estimates that I'm seeing right now, we're showing a total volume going out of that property at 44 cars during peak time, turning left on 156th. And what's left of 156th? You've got Costco, you've got Walmart, you've got the grocery stores down there, you've got schools to the left. So, again, all 91 homes, if they want to go westbound, must turn left on 156th. I am asking that we get a new study done on the traffic to really take a hard look at this because I don't believe that anybody's in agreement with the numbers that we're seeing so far. And lastly, in my 16 seconds, I also wondered, has the city developer conducted an economic impact study on how this development might affect our property values in adjacent neighborhoods? So, I wondered if this has been done in other ones where we have 1.1 to, I would argue, $1.5 million homes in a gated community where we've put something like this adjacent to that? Have we seen that it has impacted us? Because as homeowners, as you can understand, we are certainly investing a lot of our precious retirement money into our homes. So, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And just as we go through the process, the ding means that three minutes is up. I'd like to allow for the finishing of thoughts and as everyone's been doing. But I just wanted to remind everyone, that's what that dinging is. And it's my job to make sure I stay on track. So, I'm just asking also that when you hear that, just know that it would be good to wrap up, as they've done. Thank you. Next, I have Pasquale and Diane LeCant, opposed to the item. Less density, less traffic, traffic light at 156th and Riggs. And did you want to speak? Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, sir. So, just once again, the comments are, you know, the less density, less traffic, and that there should be a traffic light at 156th. Next up, we have Sarah and Chris Latino, opposed to the item. And did you wish to speak? Thank you, sir. And just once again, state your name and then three minutes, please.
Yeah. Your Commissioners, my name is Christopher Latino, resident of the City of Gilbert. As fellow residents have stated, we're very concerned about the traffic. I wanted to bring a little bit of science into it. Basically, where the Lennar project exists on Riggs to 156th, you're talking about 1,000 feet. The average person the other day was clocked. I was clocking him at traveling 65 miles per hour, which is about 95 to 100 miles or feet per second. So, we have about 13 seconds to make a decision whether or not we can turn left from on 156th onto Riggs, get up to enough speed to where we are matching traffic speed without causing a collision from the eastbound and westbound traffic lanes. With this consideration, we have 63 residents that have an average of two to three cars per resident. We have a bigger product. Their product is also a three-car garage. Most of us have three and four-car garages. So, we're going to expect that we're going to have another 180 units of vehicles coming out of that residence. Again, if we do 50/50, we're doubling almost our access to 156th and onto Riggs. The last item I wanted to bring up, which I don't think anyone else has, we've just sustained a massive increase to our sewage bills for reconditioning and reclamation facilities and supply of city water. With all these new homes, that is just going to impact that even further. Is there any kind of expectation where these new developers are going to somehow help with those costs and help reduce some of our city costs and liability for our city water supply and removal? And thank you guys very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Next, Kayleen Marvin, opposed to the item. Traffic in and out of 156th Street is a major concern. And Kayleen, did you wish to speak? Thank you. Matt Wilkins, opposed to the item. Did you wish to speak? Oh, oh, that's okay. Did you wish to speak? Okay. So, just noting, Matt is opposed. Okay. Jeremy Decker, wish to speak. Please come up. State your name for the record and three minutes, sir.
Hi. My name's Jeremy Decker. I reside in Marathon Ranch. I'm going to be the anomaly tonight. And I'll just tell you, my background is I am the project manager, construction arm, or multifamily developer. So, I am pro-development. I think Lennar, after the first meeting, came out the second time, they listened. They did a very good job. And quite honestly, I wasn't planning on being here until I saw the announcement and I saw the setbacks. So, everybody talks about the San Tan design criteria. I don't really know what it is. But I build things for a living. And I can read when you don't stagger the front and you put the houses too close together. And I'm going to say something, not to insult Mr. Ray back there. But the way they're laying this out, it's going to look like a trailer park. It's going to be a bunch of square houses, very up close to the front, maybe decent-sized backyards, crammed in left to right to get maximum value out of the land for maximum profit. And again, capitalism, I think the Vice Chair said earlier, I'm about capitalism too. But we want to maintain property values. You don't build a trailer park in front of our home, the Shea Homes development that's behind us. Adora Trails may have all three of the zoning capacity zones, but majority is sevens and eights. Mr. Zinke across the street has already sold Lennar part of his property. He's going to sell to somebody someday later. So, while the SP6, whatever, it kind of works and they're exceeding it, I am worried about the future when Mr. Zinke starts selling off his land and someone comes in and tries to squeeze in a five because there's a six across the street and there's a six next door. So, while I'm not standing here saying that you need to get a seven, it would be nice. But I don't know if the numbers are going to work. But the setbacks, they need to go away. It creates a neighborhood that is unattractive and does not fit in. I believe the word everybody uses is complementary. That neighborhood is not complementary to any neighborhood around us. And I would argue anyone to try and prove that. So, the setbacks need to go away. It just is unacceptable for what we're supposed to do. Now, the other thing is traffic, okay? Everybody read the traffic data. It's late. The part that caught me is somewhere buried in the middle. There's a statement by the traffic engineer. He said, "We ran the numbers and they came back really bad." And I'm paraphrasing and speaking in small terms. So, he goes, "So, we ran it again and we put some more data in and now it works." The fact that they started out with three, four-year-old data, red flag to begin with. But then, when you, in engineering language, but layman's speed, go, "I didn't like the way the math worked out, so I tweaked it." I find that to be unsatisfactory in my way of thinking. And in my world, it's always the math. You can't argue the math. Well, I can if your man says he changed the input data and affected the equation, okay? The city reviewed the equations. I didn't look at the attachments and we didn't get them. I'm sure they followed what they needed to do. So, in closing, there's too many traffic lights around there. But the City of Gilbert controls the intersection at 154th. They control the light at Adora Trails. They can put in a presence sensor and figure out how to time the lights for us. And then, real quick, sorry, one last thought. The speeding, Gilbert Police Department, every Sunday morning, when I go get my coffee, they must stop. Seven people in the 30 minutes it takes me to go up there, sit through the drive-through and come back. They are running radar every Sunday morning because they know people are not maintaining the speed limit there. I wish they'd run it seven days a week. They only do it every Sunday. So, it's not a secret that Riggs is practically a U.S. highway. So, anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, I have Richard and Allison Hare, opposed and wishes to speak. Comment, "I cannot attend, but sent an email to Barbara Christman to read on my behalf." Barbara, did you read that email or?
Gilbert Planning Commission members, good evening. My name is Allison Hare. Husband Richard and I live at 25448 South 156th Street. Our property is part of the county island west of the proposed Lennar development and adjacent to Marathon Ranch. Me and our neighbors along 156th have concerns about this particular development. First is the traffic study conducted a couple of years ago. Apparently, it reflects only the 91 homes proposed by Lennar using a two-lane road onto Riggs, which is a major artery for traffic incoming from Queen Creek, San Tan Valley, et cetera. It doesn't take account of Marathon Ranch, average, three vehicles per house in the surrounding neighborhoods converging into our Riggs peak mute times and really all day. Adding a lane is not going to prevent the inevitable accidents. Proposed entry/exit locations for Lennar with headlights into our properties is definitely not acceptable either. She's talking about the entrance off of 156th Street. Second is the density of this development. It doesn't match the caliber of surrounding neighborhoods such as Marathon Ranch, Calandria, custom homes on 154th Street. I can't see how this will help my property values or those of my neighbors. And finally, what's feasibly, studies were conducted on this development and when were they completed? On previous developments in the area, Gilbert was strong in ensuring that they were a fit for the community. Marathon Ranch and the Shea Homes on Val Vista went through many revisions and replaced previous plans. Thank you for your time, Richard and Allison Hare.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sure Elena's now Googling what to do when the Chair allows people to speak on other people's behalf. So, I don't know if that was allowed, but I did it. So, oops. Okay. Next up, Joe Benther, opposed and wishes to speak. Need traffic light, but bus stop issue. And I think one story back. I'm not sure what that last part says. One story back, Black Hawk. But go ahead, you can speak, Joe.
My name's Joe Buther. And first of all, I'd like to, I know I butt heads with the gentleman, but he said he would change south part of his housing development to one story. So, I appreciate that. But the only thing I want to say, and I'm going to say the traffic again, but the only thing I will add is that that corner is so bad that the school bus couldn't allow kids to get off the bus there. So, we had to allow the school bus to come into a private gated community to offload the students. I'm not sure whether students for this community would be able to pick up and get on a school bus or be let out. That would be my concern because, like Doug mentioned earlier, 5:00 in the morning, we wait a few minutes to try to make a left turn out of that community. And you're not going out into a meridian, you're going into oncoming traffic. So, that's my big objection.
Thank you. Next up, Ernie Fung, wishes to speak. Referring to the fire, has the Commission developed any disaster evacuation plans for these communities? Okay. Please state your name and three minutes, Ernie.
Yeah, hi. Thank you. I'm Ernie Fung. I'm a resident of Marathon Ranch also. I, partly, I wanted to address the traffic as well because I think there's a community benefit for putting a traffic light there. But there are two schools right after us. When you go westbound, there's elementary school and there's a Basia High School. So, in order to slow down the traffic, which is currently going at over 55 most of the time, if you put in a traffic light, it will help to slow it down before it get to the schools. The other thing is, if you really insist that you don't want to put a traffic light, a suggestion that I have, if you can put no U-turn sign at the intersection of 156th on both eastbound and westbound, because that often time also prevents us of making the turn when someone tried to make a U-turn. And there are more and more traffic now making a U-turn for some reason. I don't understand why. Regarding the fire situation, I read that the Lahana Fire, the reason why there's heavy casualty is because this is a one-access role community that they have failed to manage the growth. And as a result of that, when the natural disaster happened, most of the community residents cannot get out. So, I would like to, I'm not opposed necessarily to the development. I just hope that maybe you guys can help to develop a evacuation plan for both communities because both communities are going to be heavily dependent on this one narrow 156th Street for both access and egress. And in the situation where 150-some family are all trying to get out at the same time, we need to, we need to figure out how to get out because there's only one road out. So, if you can help us to develop an evacuation plan so that we don't have to see the same disaster in Lahana, you guys can read it. That's the major reason why there's such a heavy casualty because of that fire. So, thank you for your help.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Ed Brunbeck, opposed to the item and wishes to speak. All right, sir. Thank you. State your name for the record and then three minutes.
My name's Ed Brunbeck, Marathon Ranch resident. And similar to what a lot of my other residents have said, it's just I'm concerned about the safety of turning out of 156th. I read the traffic study as well. And when I read it, there was no light suggested. They did recommend a turning lane essentially that would be stacking up parallel. So, we'd basically be competing with each other with who's going left, who's going right. I'm concerned with that scenario in that it's going to block my line of sight if I'm in the right lane, looking that way, and there's an SUV there. Creates some challenges. The traffic going down through there, as we said before, I'd really like to see the data on what the speed is, the average speed is down through there because it's marked, you know, as we all know, 45. But somebody mentioned every weekend day, early in the morning, 5:00, 6:00 in the morning, there's a police officer sitting there with their lights out, radaring people down through there as early as 6:00 in the morning. So, you can check the records. Yeah. Otherwise, I really don't have anything else to share that hasn't been shared already. So, thank you for your hearings.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Next up, Stephen Man? Marvin? Okay, yes. Opposed the item and wishes to speak. Traffic is a major concern, Riggs Road and 156th. So, three minutes, Stephen, and state your name for the record, please.
Thank you, Chairman, Council, Commission, sorry. As was, basically, I have a lot of, basically, the same concerns as everybody else. One thing that hasn't been mentioned about Riggs Road is it is a six-lane road, okay? I'm a lifelong resident of Gilbert, born and raised in this area, lived in downtown in the Heritage District. And at that time, we thought that was a lot of traffic back, you know, even back in the 80s, you know, 80s and 90s, we thought that was a lot of traffic. It's nothing compared to what we're dealing with on Riggs Road today. As was previously mentioned, Basia High School is a little less than the, probably about a third of a mile from 156th to Val Vista. I can guarantee you at any time of the day when those lights are flashing, maybe one out of 1,000 cars are going to 35 mile an hour speed limit. It is just, it's It is just, it's just nuts. The reason that people are using our area as a turnaround area is because of the amount of traffic. I personally send my daughters down to Caliendra, which is down at Adora Trails, to make a U-turn there because it's much safer, they can't get out going left. So, again, just a rehash of kind of the things. I'd also like to point out that, you know, the, the recommendation from the, from the Planning Commission is that, or the Planning Department, is that they're opposed to a signal at 156 unless a signal warranted study shows it as necessary. I think you're hearing really loud and clear from the residents that a study needs, a thorough study needs to be done, not one, you know, on a day right after Christmas break when they, when they did it between the hours of 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. That's inadequate amount of, of detail. And as Mr. Decker pointed out, you know, even in, in the middle, it's pointed out that they had to adjust their numbers. So that, that's not, we question the validity of that. In closing, I'd, you know, I'd like to recommend that a further study be done on that. I'm not personally opposed to the, to the development, although, as was pointed out, three cars or even two cars per house, you're doubling the amount of traffic coming out onto a single-lane road. Try driving down your residential street because that's really what we have of 156 is a, is a 24-foot residential street, and you're going to try to put that much traffic onto it at that point. So just to give it a graphic that way. While you may have qualified immunity or even indemnity from the decisions that, that this council presents to the count, to the, this commission presents to the town council, that doesn't alleviate the city from its fiduciary duty to protect its residents. And so I would, I would make the recommendation that you at least get the right data to be able to make a much more informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, I have Brent Atkinson. He's opposed the item but does not wish to speak. Are you sure, Brent?
Yeah.
Okay. We have Joe and Jody Friello, do not wish to speak. Didn't say whether you were in favor or opposed.
I do wish to speak.
You do? Okay, please come on up and then just state your name and three minutes, please, sir.
My name's Joe Friello, I live at Marathon Ranch as well. Just want to point out a couple of things that have already been pointed out, but a couple of questions even for yourselves. What would you do if you lived where we lived? House value? What impact will the new development have? The important part and the fun part about living in Marathon Ranch is, yes, we're residents, but amazing neighbors. So when you think about, hey, less is more, you know, less will still be more. Less homes over there, more traffic. So that part of, you know, he was showing 48, 49, I can't believe they didn't use the same numbers themselves, but 62, I'm sorry, 62 residents showed up at the first meeting. We only have 63 households. So if you want to break it down, divide it even by two, you're looking at 35% to 50% participation. And that's why I say, hey, great neighbors, but we don't have more to come out and battle. It's just all the concerns from our little community. So what can we do in terms of the value of the home, 1.1 to 1.5? You look at that perspective, that was our investment. Now we're going to bring in basically apartments, what they're going to look like apartments, they're five feet apart from each other. You might as well just put them all together and try to figure it out like New York does with just, how do I get to the backyard? I'll just go through the house. So something to consider. And again, the safety, it's a suicide mission. I wish you guys would try that out a couple of times a day, seven days a week. And sometimes heading down to Adora Trails, that throws everything off, especially if you're running late. I know, don't run late, but holy cow, it's scary. It's scary. And trying to get into the left turn lane as it's going east, you know, Riggs, I get in there and I just huddle and try to look behind me like, okay, roll down my window, make sure I'm not going to get taken out. So all of that leads to what I said earlier. You know, put yourself in our shoes and consider what we're going through, and then take that into consideration. I wouldn't approve that many homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Last but not least, I have Prescott and opposed, does not wish to speak. 156th Street and Riggs can't handle the influx of traffic safely. Did I say that correctly? Okay. Very good. All right. And since we've come this far, I just want to take one more moment to ask, is there anyone else who had not filled out a card that did wish to speak? I want to be sure that we are able to capture all of this prior to... Okay. Thank you very much. If Mr. Ray wanted to come up and address some of the concerns that these citizens have laid out, please do so.
Chair members of the commission, there was quite a few things that I've heard. I will, I will punt on traffic for a moment because I feel that, given the extensive discussion and the comments that have made about traffic, I believe it only appropriate to have Dawn Cartier with CivTech, who is our traffic engineer, who performed the study, who reviewed it, be able to come up and talk because I, I felt that some were, some comments that I certain weren't intended to be disingenuous, but we've called into the question a little bit of the validity of the work that, that she has done, and she's been doing it a long time. I will tell you that while traffic, we have had countless discussions with transportation staff about this, about access, about how everything goes. And we've been put to the test too by town staff as to how we look at it in the analysis. But again, I will defer that to Dawn, if I may. So there's a couple of other things that kind of touched on safety, and I really want to touch on that. I've heard comments about building fire code, heard comments about school bus. This is going to comply with building code, it's going to comply with fire code. There's absolutely no question. And I'll tell you, I've been doing this a long time, and in, in all the years of doing it, especially doing it with Lennar and a single-family subdivision of the quality and caliber that these guys are proposing, I've never heard it called a trailer park before, and I've never heard it called apartments. This is a single-family subdivision. Make no mistake about it. Lennar is very proud of the work that they do and the work that they've done in Gilbert, and I could waste a lot of time going through the wonderful communities that they've built not only in Gilbert but in other parts of the valley as well. There was a question and comment about improvements, and let's talk about 156th. As staff had in their presentation, the west side of 156th are county, in unincorporated Maricopa County. So the only thing that we have to work with is what is within the city, the town of Gilbert's jurisdiction, and that is the eastern half of 156th. The western half is county. And so if the county residents were so inclined to make a dedication to complete the full improvements for 156th, that's something that could be done. I don't know where the town is on a CIP plan to go out and start condemning property to fully improve 156th to what it's designed to do, but that's why the condition exists today down 156th. At that intersection, with us not being required to but voluntarily putting in a right turn lane to get out, we saw that as a good thing, yet I heard a comment tonight that said us making that additional dedication for that turn lane is now a bad thing. So I'm not sure what we do with that. I know there was talk about fire and access and a reference to Lahaina and the Maui fires. We have two points of access to this community. We have obviously 156th, but then we also have a ride-in, ride-out. The streets are public within our community. School buses will be able to drive through our community and effectuate drop-off and pickup of children. And so as we look at that, there was a comment too about development, what I, what I refer as impact fees. The town is going to get more than, 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 they're getting a lot out of us in impact fees for single-family homes. They recently went through an update and effectively doubled the amount of impact fees that the town collects for single-family homes, taking it from roughly $14,000 a door to about $30,000, $35,000 a door. So I can assure you that development is paying for itself, paying for its impact to the system as well. Those were just kind of a, a few things that I wanted to touch on. Again, Chair, with, with your permission and, and the commission's indulgence, I would like Dawn better than I to be able to talk about traffic since, as I was taking notes, I think every single person mentioned traffic. And I know that's not per se part of, it is part of the request, but I think it's important that we, we do have this discussion, but I will, Chair, take direction from you on that particular issue.
Yeah, please. I think it would be a hoo-vus to hear from the traffic. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Dawn Cartier, the president and founder of CivTech. And I just wanted to walk through the traffic study a little bit because there are a lot of technical nuances in here that have been misconstrued through the comments. Not all incorrect, but just taken in a different context than how they were used in the traffic study. So first, our traffic counts at 150th Street, 56th Street and Riggs were conducted on January 8th. This is a day school was in session. We counted for two hours in the morning and two hours in the evening, which represent the peak hours of traffic on Riggs Road. This is a typical standard, it is what we're requested to do by the town for every study. What we do with that two hours of data is we look at every 15 minutes and we look for what adds up to be the highest hour. We don't get to pick a random hour in there, it has to be the highest hour of traffic. And so in this case, because it was mentioned, I just want everyone to know there was actually 26 vehicles in that morning, one hour leaving, 21 arriving, total of 47 vehicles from Marathon Ranch, 63 households. This would be a very standard number, and it actually completely aligns with the numbers that we have also predicted for our project here. In the evening, I would say there were 22 arrive, or leaving and 34 arriving. This is normal, right? In the morning, more people are leaving, and in the evening, more are coming home. So our numbers in the background traffic are based on one of the highest days, January. People in Arizona are here in January, school is in session in January. So just wanted to point out that we're using at 156th Street and Riggs, one of the highest numbers. Mr. Decker had pointed out something really important and critically important. When we look at this intersection just alone, without considering what's happening east and west on Riggs, it is operating with a very long delay. You're hearing the neighbors complain about that delay. And that delay is, is truly what they're feeling when they go there today. So what we did is we had some traffic counts on file at 154th and at Adora Trails. They are from 2022. What we did is we looked at the traffic volume east-west on Riggs then versus the traffic east-west on Riggs, which we have a brand-new count from 2025, and we grew all of that. So that 2025 on either side was actually raised up to match the traffic that's already happening on Riggs. The reason we did this is because there are traffic signals on either side, and that has to be considered as we're thinking about what happens at 156th. And what we find in the analysis, as was pointed out, is when we consider those traffic signals and the proper timing of those traffic signals, the delay at 156th can be alleviated. That is what the traffic study is saying, is that there is delay there, and if we look at the two signals on either side and what could be done there in the timing, there's the potential to create a lot more of what we call gaps. We stop the traffic on either side, it creates a gap in the traffic that will allow more than, I did hear it was like six seconds or nine seconds, but more time than that for that exiting vehicle to get out. And that really is the recommendation of the study. So I, I didn't want to go into too much more technical detail unless you have questions, but just to, to caveat that I do think what you're hearing is right. I do think there is a fix, and that's what the traffic study is mentioning.
Did anybody have any questions as it relates to that traffic study? Commissioner DeGervina?
Traffic study was based on currently what's there. Did you take into consideration those 91 lots that are going to add another potentially 180 cars?
Yes, we did.
In your analysis?
Through the chair, Commissioner, yes, we have to, that's a part of the study. So the town requires us to generate traffic, predict traffic for what will be there and add that to the traffic that's already there. In addition, we also have to look at not just what's already there, how much that traffic will grow in the timeline it'll take for us to build. So the Willowbrook traffic is in there, the growth of background traffic is in there, the existing traffic is in there, it's all of the consideration.
I'm on Riggs Road quite a bit, two, three, four times a week. That's a very busy street. I watched it grow in the last 20 years from, I think, two lanes to six lanes now. So it's only going to get busier, so I understand the residents' concerns.
Definitely, and I would say that we have a really high peak hour existing on Riggs in the westbound direction in the morning, it's over 2,000 vehicles a lot. And coming home eastbound, two, over 2,000 vehicles and at PM peak, so I would agree. That's, that is a significant amount of traffic using an arterial, but it's an arterial street, so.
Commissioner, just make sure your microphone, it's...
All right. Excuse me. The town can make adjustments to those traffic signals to allow for that gap?
I would have to defer that to the town traffic engineer to answer just because they really are the ones who control the traffic signal and timing of the signals.
You mentioned that in your presentation, that that's possible.
That's what we evaluated, is whether or not that could be done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else? Lively bunch. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions, comments, concerns for applicant, traffic engineer or staff? Commissioner Simon?
Yeah, I've got a question for staff. With regards to that 156th, you know, obviously, I understand now that part of it is County Island and we can't do anything there. But looking at the, the overhead on that down Riggs, we've got collectors both east and west that are island collectors, and so there's no ability to turn left out of that community into a center collector lane in order to merge. And I don't know if there's any conversation with regards to alleviating the islands so that you have the ability to use the center lane as a merge.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. So Riggs is a major collector, so our standard is to have the race meeting in there, and then there are opposing lefts, and so there would be, at this time, that's not something we would be considering. If I answered your question correctly?
Well, it, it, it doesn't. It almost appears that, that that was initially built the way that the road was built and designed is for a light because of the islands, which basically, and I'm not a traffic person, so I would give it up to somebody in traffic, obviously, but it, it seems to me that if you've got left-hand turn out of wherever, onto a busy arterial, you're going to need to either have light for safety in order to manage the traffic, or you're going to need to have some sort of merge into traffic. And so by having the island there in my head, theologically, it doesn't make sense because now I've got a, if I'm turning left, I've got to cross, in essence, four lanes of, in order to get into a lane. So, just a thought. So I, I mean, that, that's, listening to the, the residents and the community... So I mean, that's, listening to the residents and the community that's here, you know, I mean, I've got some quasi-issues with the development, not anything that would stop me from approving the development, but listening to this traffic issue and looking at overhead and thinking about it myself, thinking, yeah, I mean, even if you time the lights correctly east and west, I mean, if I get a gap of ten seconds coming from the east and a gap of ten seconds coming from the west, it's got to line up perfectly so I can get one car out of there. And if I get a backup of five cars, to the resident's point, I'm going to have twenty, twenty minutes of backup to get out. And so I'm just thinking from a safety perspective, it would seem logical to me that we would want to do something, whether it's allow for a median merge or put a light in that intersection.
Yeah, per town standards, we're allowed, so this would look like we're allowed to have full access spacing every six hundred and sixty feet. So this would look similar, every six hundred and sixty feet, this would be allowed. And so, you know, it's not realistic to put a signal in every six hundred and sixty feet. There is, just to answer your question about safety, there is a misconception about traffic signals, whether it's a place that they can mitigate safety, they're not always a safety mitigation, because if you look down the street to the crash history compared to like Adora Trails to this one, from a safety perspective, this operates a lot better than Adora Trails does. So, and federal and state guidelines, they give warnings about if you kind of install signals without meeting these federal and state guidelines, that there are disadvantages to place in these, including some safety concerns.
So, that being said, and again, I'm not traffic, so I would say, okay, yeah, we need to live to those standards, but at the same time, we need to look at what I would call safety of the community and feasibility in this. And so for me, there's living under, you know, I don't, you drive down Val Vista either direction, and there's lights, it feels like every five feet at times. So I'm not saying, I'm necessarily saying that I'm an advocate to throw a light in there just for the sake of having a light, but I think that there needs to be some concession with regards to how are we going to get traffic to flow in a safe manner in and out of this? I mean, and the other subject would be D cell lanes, which I'm looking at this, and it doesn't appear there's D cell lanes in this plan. So this traffic piece of it just I'm struggling with because of the residents. So, I mean, as far as the community goes, I don't know that I have necessarily an issue other than traffic at this point. So, and so I guess I would, at this point, ask that staff work with the developer to figure out how they can make this a safer transition, and I don't even know if that's something that can be done at this point, but.
Thank you, Commissioner Simon. We actually can't take any more public comments, sir, I apologize.
He was in support of what he was saying, so.
Okay, no, I know. Okay, anyone else?
I had another question for the traffic.
Kyle, I think.
Set back down.
Commissioner DeGervina, he had another question. Kyle, sorry.
You escaped too early.
And please state your name, just so that the attendants know.
Yeah, Glenn Emery with the Town of Gilbert, the Traffic Engineering Group.
My question is that, did I hear you say that because the traffic signals are so close together that there's no justification for a signal at one hundred and fifty-sixth Street?
No, it's more has to do with the volume on one hundred and fifty-sixth Street. So hopefully, we can all agree that one house wouldn't justify a traffic signal. So the question is, how many, what is that volume needed? And that's, that's been determined by feds and kind of the state that regulates that, and that's been adopted by the state. That's the law of the land.
Okay, then you also made a comparison to, I guess, accidents at one fifty-sixth and Adora Trails, but there's a lot more cars coming. It's like comparing apples and oranges. There's a lot more cars coming out of Adora Trails than there is at a one fifty-sixth Street. So I don't know if that data is accurate.
No, I mean, that's a good point, but unfortunately, I can't do anything at this intersection to guarantee that there won't be.
That's obvious. I mean, but I think it would add to the safety of that intersection.
Right. But I think just, if you go throughout the town, whenever you look at a signalized intersection, it doesn't necessarily have a lower crash rate than an unsignalized intersection, especially with something with a low, low volume like the road. And I realize that the residents don't feel like it's a low volume, but comparatively to other signalized intersections.
You also have County to the west at some point in time. Gilbert could potentially annex that property, and then it's going to start being developed, I would guess, as everything else in that area is being developed. So there will be more traffic on one fifty-sixth, that's a guarantee. It's just a matter, not a matter of if, it's a matter of when.
Right.
So are those taken into consideration when you're looking at the analysis of that?
Not at this time. It will when that comes in. There is a large parcel to the north, which is probably the more likely side that would generate a traffic signal for consideration.
So it sounds like the Town of Gilbert's opposed to a traffic signal there.
We're not saying absolutely never. We're just saying, based on the information we have, based on the development that's planned, there's not a traffic signal planned. Based on the volumes that are generated by these two elements to the south, we have concerns about constructing a traffic signal. Thank you.
Vice Chair. And before you go, Kyle, it's not just volume, it's warrants, right? And volume is some of the warrants, but there's twenty-some-odd total warrants, right?
Right, and they did look at all, there's nine warrants, they looked at all nine.
And if it fails warrants, it needs a light or warrants dictate if it may, and you've got a warrant study, right?
We have a warrant study, yeah.
And how recently was the warrant study done?
So I know there was talk about the twenty-two data. I was looking, it looked like it was January twenty-five when they pulled the data.
And the warrant study does not say signal?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted. Thank you. The other point is not a Kyle point, it's, and Brennan touched on this, but it's the only point that I actually, I think I can address adequately is, one of the points, I think it was Mr. Latino made it, about the water wastewater. The answer is yes, that every new house has to pay impact fees, I think it's like twenty grand. I mean, it's a pretty, twenty-five, it's a, it's a pretty fair chunk of money that has to go in, which goes towards paying for infrastructure improvement, basically grow in the city and includes water wastewater. So the answer is yes, they do pay quite a bit of money to put a new house in.
It's not going to reduce their cost?
I'll remind the commission that we need to be speaking on the record if you are going to, please. Thank you. But go ahead, I just meant to make sure that it's being recorded.
All's I said is that the impact fees aren't going to reduce the existing homes in that area. It's going to cover the cost of the future and the expense of what's currently going in, and they're always going up, and they're expensive, just part of the, yeah. What his concern was?
Then, please, we have to continue, and it's not, it's nothing against anyone, but I don't, I don't have. And. I can't, but I can't stop you from yelling it, so. Okay, sir, that's not the issue in front of us, that's not the issue in front of us tonight at all. It's okay, and I respect the emotions and wanting to speak, and I hope that we can cover it. And did anyone else have any other comments that they would like to address? Okay, well, then I'll close the. Public comment, bring it up to the dais for further discussion. You know, I myself want to be sure that we're clear on, you know, what we are voting on, and I recognize the issues as it relates to traffic, and I believe there are some significant limitations as to, Vice Chair spoke about warrants. I think if we were to take now and the traffic we are describing is already a problem, that is a theme across Gilbert, of any development that comes in, traffic is said to be an issue. We have very large roads that cost a significant amount of time and money to maintain. The town has to take these things on, and the processes that are set up in order to be able to create when and if lights are warranted are based upon engineering principles, and a significant amount of work goes into that. And I completely understand and respect all of the comments as it relates to traffic. The problem that we are going to run into as a planning commission is we will not have the authority to just say, we think this has, even based on all of the emphatic discussions that we've been able to have, we can't particularly say, don't, you can't do, you need to put a light in. If there are safety issues and things like that, I think a further study or things may be warranted, but I just want to be sure that we level-set that developments come in, that I one-hundred respect all of the property rights from everybody that is speaking, but at the same time, there are property rights of the individual who owns the land that is being developed. Granted, it looks more as if it's a big brother thing because it's a developer, and then it's the town that is reviewing it, but I just want to be sure that we do not lose sight of the fact that a significant amount of time, effort, and work and analysis goes into this. Now, I just want to say about the traffic. Now we can get into discussing a little more about the development density and things of that nature, just because we're dealing with the minor plan amendment and rezoning. And I just wanted to be sure that as we're getting later into the evening, that we try to keep ourselves focused on what that is and be able to effectively make decisions based on what we are deciding. And that's not meant to discount, that's just meant to say if, at the end of the day, there is a problem there, and I don't discount that. My daughter went to Payne Elementary, this would have been back, I don't want to age myself too much, or her, but it was a while ago, probably before that earlier traffic study, and it was even, the queue of cars that I would see sitting in pickup and drop-off was immense. So I totally understand the concerns as it relates to traffic, and I think we can hopefully address that. But just wanted to bring that around, bring it back, and then let now any other discussion from Commissioners as to the thoughts as it relates to, you know, the layout and the minor general plan amendment we're talking about. Well, good, everyone's fine. Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Chair. I'll kick things off, I guess. As far as the traffic goes, I am going to defer to the town on their best judgment and best practices as far as how they're going to look at that. I agree, it does sound like there's a bit of a problem there. I think as things develop to the west, I know it's county land, but that can often change quickly if somebody decides they want to sell to a developer. I think there's going to come a time where a light probably is going to end up there. It just might not be at this time. As far as my comments, the last time we talked about this, I was, I had comments on the number of deviations that the applicant was asking for, and they have reduced that quite a bit. The reductions that they're asking for now with the five-foot side setbacks and the not having the staggered lots, I initially kind of was concerned about those things. I appreciate that the applicant provided the product and showed us what that's going to look like. Looking at the footprints of those homes, I don't think you're going to perceive the lack of staggered setbacks. You've got those side entry garages, that's going to narrow up the front of that house. I think you're going to perceive more variation than there actually will be. It'd be great if they can still work in some of that. It breaks up the streetscape, makes it a nicer community. On the five-foot setbacks, we have those all over our town, and there's some really lovely communities that have five-foot setbacks. I live in one of them, so I don't think that it's going to be a problem. It also allows you to have a little bit bigger house, which is going to be able to, you know, allow a home that's a little larger, increases values of the property and that kind of thing. So it's kind of a give-and-take thing. There's some negatives to it, but there's also some positives to it. So I'm not really struggling too much any longer with those items. It's also not unusual to see a transition in zoning as you move towards an arterial street, to see that there's the R-ten lots to the south, and then you're going to the R-16 to the north. That's not so unusual to see that lot size go down. I appreciate the changes. I would not have been supportive of what came in in that initial meeting last September. This is a big improvement. I appreciate that those lots are also still bigger than what the R-16 requires, so I'll be supporting this project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Who's next? Vice Chair?
Okay, thank you. It's, I know I was shutting down the conversation or the side conversation, but fundamentally, I agree with it. It wasn't the right time to have it, but the problem is, the traffic problem is really Riggs, not, I don't think this, the contribution of this property is, is not that significant. I actually would go one step further in terms of the light. I don't think we, I mean, it's warranted or it's not, I don't think this, I don't think the public or really anyone has any say in it. That's a pretty academic engineering discussion. If it's required, then I don't care how much the developer doesn't want to pay for it, you got to, and if it's not required, you don't have to. The underlying problem with Riggs is, I think, beyond the scope of what we're going to be talking about tonight, but I think you've, I hope city staff has got some pretty clear feedback that you've got a growing problem, both public perception on Riggs Road itself. I do still kind of have a density problem, not so much the, within the six-thousand-square-foot lot, I don't remember what we're calling it, zoning district six or zoning six, we're above that, we're comfortably above that. The problem, we're not at six yet, we're at forty-three right now. We're going from forty-three to six. That's a pretty big swing, and, well, I mean, and a big swing happens, but for this area, it's going from one of the highest lot sizes to, unless you count on the other side of the canal, the smallest lot size. So that, to me, is the, for this area, it's going down to a very small lot size for this area. Interestingly, one of the lesser made points tonight, so I probably shouldn't get hung up on that too much, but that's where I stand.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Mr. Simon?
Yeah, I think I should probably make a comment, because I did bring up the traffic, and as much as I do feel it is an issue here, I mean, just from a feeling perspective and listening to the community, I also feel we don't have control, we have to keep focused on what is at hand. From a density perspective, I think this might be a little bit tight. However, you know, what are you going to pull back, one or two lots, maybe three lots? I mean, you're not going to get a lot off of this, even if you keep it at the zoning that it is, I believe, if I do my numbers correctly. So I appreciate the fact that the builder has agreed to keep one-story lots against the existing homes. I think that that's very generous of them, and I believe that, that, you know, once this is developed, it will actually enhance the area rather than detract from it. So I don't think it's going to reduce the home prices, but I mean, that's a crystal ball question as well, so.
Commissioner DeGervina?
Yeah, I think the developer fills all the requirements for that area, and I don't think, I know it was brought up quite a bit about the reduction of the existing homes at Marathon Ranch, or not the reduction, they reduce price potentially. I don't see that happening. It's not, I've been involved in real estate for quite a long time, it's not going to, I don't think it's going to happen, and that's not a trailer park type product. It's six-thousand-plus-square-foot lot with a decent-sized home, and Lennar does build a decent product. I don't think that should be your concern, so it's, we need more of that size so we could have people that work here in Gilbert, protect us, our cops, our teachers have a place to live. cops, our teachers have a place to live, not everybody could afford a 1.5 or 1.2 million dollar home, so I don't, that's not a concern of mine, and I don't think it should be a concern of the residents that I brought that up, I, I think it's a decent product, we need more of that in Gilbert, everything that we talk about, I should say, most of the things that we've talked about in the past is all high density, at least we have a residential comp, component going in, and I think it's going to be fine, it's not going to reduce your, your values.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Anderson, no, deep thought, okay. Well, I, I will, I will come out then and just, as it relates to the design, and as Mr. Ray knows, I probably would be happy to pile on and say that it's too, too dense and you could do something, but I think that the work that had been done as it related to an acquiescence of some size requirements, I think these are good sized homes, I think they're bigger than mine, not to say much since Planning Commission actually does not pay, but it, I, I think they are going to be nice, but I think that it's a critical element of how we can help to assimilate these types of situations into the fabric of the community, and I, and I just use this as the sense of if I'm a person and I own this land, which once again, I'm much poorer than that, so I do not, but had I, and all of the descriptions of the problems that exist, and I very much empathize with everyone about the traffic because I had, I went through the process of having a daughter learn to drive and have to try to teach her how to turn onto these three-lane roads where everybody speeds, but the point of contention that I always run into is that if I own the land and I say I want to do this, and the problem is brought up that, well, wait a minute, everybody out here is speeding, we then are taking and putting upon me that other people are committing what essentially are crimes, and my life has to be impeded by the fact that they are doing that, and I, it does not mean that I discount it as an argument, but I just try to look at it from the perspective of both the town, the citizens neighboring, the individual property owners, as well as anyone else that's going to be traveling in that area, I think putting the implications of people that are driving too fast or not paying attention and causing accidents is, it's a dangerous assertion that somehow I, or in this case, the developer, should be held accountable for that, I think the town does have accountability, and I think that's part of why the police are out there, and I don't have any insight into how the police operate, because I'm clearly not a criminal either, but I just wanted to say, in the work that's been done, usually I would be the first to say this could use some work, and in essence, it has, I mean, the developer had reduced it, moved it up to where I think it's essentially, actually a pretty good size, I think you could possibly whittle out, I don't know what the exact math would be, but let's assume you could chop off five of these lots to make it an SF7, which was sort of where, what we had heard. I, I think that a significant amount of the issues are still going to exist, and that what, what I would want to be able to do is to parlay whatever decision that we, as the governing body here do make, to also add on to that, regardless that I want to point out that I have concerns about that traffic, and I think that that goes into the fact that there's a very unique situation with the county owning the other half of the road, not just this land over here is county, but like, even if the town said, yeah, guys, you really have to do this, they would only have, not only the ability or the obligation, but they would not have the right to do anything on that other side of the road because it would be county land, and so unless we then have the ability to go convince the county they need to pay to do the same thing at the same time, which if anyone pays attention to any talk of taxes or anything else in the, well, I'd say near history, but pretty much ever, nobody likes that, so who in the, who in the county is going to go out and advocate, yeah, we need to do a $10 million bond because we need to put in this road, I just, I don't know. And so I, I just wanted to point out the complexity and from, you know, a systems engineering basis of how do you take all of these connectivities and put them, I just want to make sure we don't put too much upon just the developer, because I think they did do a pretty good Could there be more, and could there be more warranted, maybe, and I think maybe that's something where we could possibly put a stipulation for a, a more advanced study, and I, by no means I'm questioning the traffic engineering study, I, I do happen to be a civil PE, but I, that's why I brought Bill Fay, Vice Chair, because he's a better engineer than me, since I, I'm just good-looking, so, I just want to point some of those things out, and now I will take and at least entertain a motion, or if not, then I'll probably have to start asking Elena legal questions, and I know she's going to not want to hear that. Commissioner Davis?
Chair, I will, I assume I need to make these as separate motions, separate votes, but I would move to approve GP 25-01 Willowbrook.
Okay, we have a motion for item 15, GP 2501 Willowbrook, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Commissioner DeGervina, do we have any discussion? Well, fine, I'll ask then, I do have discussion. Elena, as it relates to concerns that we may share with the community as it relates to this traffic coming out onto 156th, what legal rights do we have within requesting that the developer do something in the way of further enhancing what the current position is, if it's found to be warranted, or how do we determine if it's warranted?
I'm not sure I'll be able to answer your question directly, sir, but I believe that there may be, there are opportunities later in the process to further evaluate the traffic, and maybe lean on staff to confirm that for me, if there's an opportunity at the preliminary or plat review stage, but I, I'd like to phone a friend if I could.
No, and that's okay, and, and I, I recognize, and I wanted to at least broach the subject with an understanding that from a procedural vantage point and from an authority vantage point, I don't know if we actually have that ability, but I wanted to put that out onto the record to at least show that I do believe that it, it may, it may be something that we need to look at, so, but also, that's just my opinion, so. All right, well, then we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, cast your vote. Okay, we have the one recusal from Commissioner Gage, motion carries 6-0. Then with that, we have a second, Z2502 Willowbrook, the request to rezone, do we have a motion on that?
Yes, Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Z2502, as written.
We have a motion from the Vice Chair to approve, do we have a second?
I will second that, I also note that this is a recommendation, this city council, they'll be the final decision maker on this, so.
Thank you, I was going to say that because I'm the chair, but thank you. All right, any other discussion, we have a second then, Commissioner Davis, do we have any other discussion? All right, please cast your vote. All right, motion carries, and so, just to echo that sentiment for everyone that came out, I want to make sure that, I point out that from the planning principles as it relates to this, that is what we are currently voting on and did vote on, the concerns that you have are very valid, and I would encourage to continue and bring them up with the council who will have more authority with which to actually effectively work with that. Thank you. Okay, moving on to administrative items, administrative items are for the commission discussion and action, is at the discretion of the majority of the commission regarding public input requests on any administrative items, persons wishing to speak on administrative item should complete a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to address, and the commission may or may not accept public comment. So the only item in the administrative items currently is item 16, the planning commission meeting minutes from the July 9, 2025, we would like to consider the approval of these, and of course, this was when Vice Chair Fay was the steady hand at the lead here, but has everybody reviewed them and have anything to say, otherwise a motion.
Chair, I make a motion to approve the, the minutes?
We have a motion from Vice Chair Fay to approve minutes, do we have a second?
Motion to approve with gratitude to Commissioner Anderson, who keeps me on track. Every time I say something random.
It's like the game, the game of telephone, soon it's going to be like, who's keeping him on track? Am I going to be that, keeping someone on track soon?
No, not that, Commissioner Fay, nope, not that one, no, go, read that part.
That's right, this is, we're a collective group of helpers, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner DeGervina, please cast your vote. Motion carries 7-0, all right, here, actually, you're going to need to sign those, that's right. Where am I at, item 16, okay, now we're on to communications, um, let's go to the back. Planning Commission, okay, that's the executive session, we don't have anything, we'll go to item 17, the report from Chairman and members of the commission on current events. What do we got? Yes, sir.
I got a question for staff, and I've been meaning to ask this for some time, and I keep forgetting, and topic came up tonight, and it goes back to the increase in our water bills, so my understanding is increase was to help pay for instruction and repair of existing facilities, does that be a permanent fee or is that a temporary fee, so once, once you have your funds in place or things repaired, do, does that fee go away?
I'll answer it from council's perspective, we're going to review it in two years, it's intended just for the repairs at this timeframe, but our intent is to review every two years and make sure that it's in line with what's going on, and we do have a study session coming up that's going to be looking at the rates, because they're significantly higher than what we anticipated.
Yeah, so in two years, you'll reevaluate it, and let's just say you, you raise the funds and a lot of repairs were done and.
Then there would be, theoretically, there would be a reduction then.
Okay, that, that helps.
Because this is specifically to address some, some deficiencies that we found during inspections.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's an unplanned repair.
Okay, thank you for that.
And in relation to that, I'd like to point out, it is much higher, and they just did a new system that you need to pay for, and it was hard to find out how to switch said system, and I got a notice saying, well, you didn't pay us, we're going to turn off your water, and I'm like, come on, but I was taking, I took care of it, and everything's under control, but I just wanted to put that out there, that everything is fine.
Just one other thing on that, too, that came up last night at the council meeting, is that they're not going to turn off your water if, if there's an issue, yeah, except for you, I mean, you were, you were the exception we, we put in there, but yeah, no, they're not going to do that, they recognize the challenges with the switch over.
Perfect, yeah, I figured, with me, yeah, I'm a special case, mine should have been shut off.
I, I do have a question also, I get those emails about board and commission vacancies once in a while, which I usually just, because obviously I've got a seat on the preeminent board and commission in the town of Gilbert, but I noticed there's one for the town, town of Gilbert, for this commission, that came up, is there a vacancy, or is there, is there people who are getting turned over here in the near future?
Chair and commission member, I can answer that, so our alternate positions are one-year appointments, so the vacancies were for the, the alternate positions.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Vice Chair, you are not in fact allowed to leave, so enjoy.
You have nothing to worry about at this time.
All right, well then, other than that, I don't have any other major current events other than it's hot, hopefully it gets cooler soon, so, then we'll go to item number 18, and a report from the planning services manager on current events, Ashley.
Thank you, Chair and Commission, it's late, so I will keep it brief, just a reminder that our September planning commission meeting was moved from the first Wednesday to the second Wednesday of the month, and so that'll be on the 10th, and then also, I think this might be the first opportunity that I've had to embarrass Kristen, she passed her AICP exam, and I think this might be her first hearing since she did that, so I just want to recognize her for that, very big feat.
All right, so like Pinocchio being a real boy, now she's a real planner, very nice. Okay, well, thank you all very much, this has been fun, I hope you all have a great evening, and, do I need to, I almost forget, am I supposed to do a vote?
Yeah, let's. Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Simon.
Second.
Second from Vice Chair Fay, if you could, please cast your vote. Thank you all, motion carries, good evening.